Over and we're getting very close to that. We can't wait for the next meeting. So we're hoping, even though I know you guys want us to kind of bump this to the facilities, the way we could just continue the discussion so we could, you know, make some progress. And I have a feeling some of the decisions that are made after this time may affect what's going on with what we're doing. So we're just trying to stay in the discussion and keep the ball moving.
Okay, thank you, Kennedy. I don't know, I think that, you know, in sort of response to that, again, with public comment, it's not something that we're obligated to respond to at all, but I'd like to because I think it's frustrating to come here and make comments.
Right.
So just to sort of acknowledge your points, first of all, thank you so much for coming, just bidding the frost, Kennedy. I know that some of your, some of the folks involved in the basketball program, yourself, were clear last time.
Right.
Similar position. And since that time, I think Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Owen have been working actively with that group to operationally come to or arrive at some solution that might allow for a whole of play.
Yeah, I just think the most clearly important thing for us.
Right.
But we do recognize the importance of the social emotional development of kids and what sports provides for them. We've been looking at some alternatives and we're working closely with it. You know, like we're, you know, we're committed to making sure we have a basketball season for our own basketball players.
The varsity level?
At, we hope every, everyone.
Okay, yeah.
Boys and girls, like that's, that's absolutely a plan. And have some, but I just want you to know that we're working diligently with it and we have some good ideas around that.
Okay. I just need to make the point that the, at Osgood and Deer Hill, the younger kids pound on that as their program on the weekends. And if there's a way we can help facilitate that, I know you've, I know our president, Mike Heschin, has walked the schools and had a chance to tour and so forth, at least at the high school level. And we're told there might be some time in the weekends, but Osgood and Deer Hill also super important. And I know the cafeteria is not really being used as a cafeteria. If there's any way we could get half of that back by moving the chairs back. I asked the question last week, but I wasn't able to chime in. But it would seem like it would make some sense to be able to move the half of the chairs into cafeteria so we could at least have one gym available for us for practices. There's two courts in the Deer Hill. And if for some reason the high school were to clear out the tables and chairs, because it seems like to me it's going to be a really tough score for you guys to move those tables and chairs every single day at high school, that if those are really easy lightweight tables and chairs, there's a way we could use those on some of the other schools. So when we do have to clear the spaces, because I know those Osgood tables are really big, thick and heavy. So if we are willing to organize volunteers to help with that process if we can, and it sounds like we are able to do so, so we'd be happy to try to work on that.
And I appreciate the collaboration. You know, as we try to do what we can to afford basketball for what's possible, but always keeping in mind our obligation at the elementaries, which includes the state of the population, always takes precedent. However, you know, I think we have some creative thoughts that we've brainstormed.
Okay.
How about that was very helpful.
Think it's possible to have another conversation this week about it?
Well, I think we're continuing to have conversations.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have done it at all.
All right, I appreciate that very much.
These are, these are times that deserve, that require a very creative measure.
I understand.
For everything.
Yep. I get it.
We're, we hear where you're coming from and we're, we're trying to be right alongside you to help you.
Right.
Promise you we'll do our best and we'll work out something. And that's something we'll hopefully be satisfied with.
Right, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Just to connect, this is the representative over here last, last meeting. They are actively involved in our big.
Yep, yep, Neil Andrews is here, Mike Heschin, some of the guys that are on our board. They're actively involved. Yep, good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you for coming.
Yep.
All right, before we move on to 21, Ms. Voss, if you can hear me, can you mute your, you mute your system and shut your camera off?
I, can you hear me? Because I have it. Oh, can you see me?
You can. So I feel like if you can disable your camera and your microphone.
You got it.
Amazing transcriber doing an amazing job probably on camera.
All right, I'll do that, sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I wonder if that will help with the status.
That was where the status goes.
That's what happened.
And I do apologize, I think you were correct with the red. So the very beginning of the meeting, that had been cut off, if you want to.
Yes, it got cut off and also, was that when I came in? Just now. So someone noted at home that they couldn't hear anything. I feel like maybe that was a hearing. So could you, Ms. Vagan, if you still can't hear, can you let us know? Or if you can, let us know as well, because you got your message.
I think when the green light went on, that was a sign that we were hearing.
Okay.
So, and that was basically just a sentence into Mr. Kennedy's.
Okay, all right. Well, just to catch up, I just had to call the meeting to order and all members were present except for Mrs. Caleri, and I just want to repeat it for him watching at home. That she, she didn't want to make it, she has another board obligation, a non-cohabiting board obligation that doesn't need to frequently exist. And so it was something she had to fill and she wanted to be here and realize there were some important topics, but did not and wanted to express her regrets to everyone. So that's the only important thing, I knew others had called me in order that I wanted to reiterate.
I want to check Kathy, can you still hear? Okay, all right. Kathy Voss, can you, can you still hear us? I got a note, your note came through that your, the audio is not, is not coming through well.
That would be the message.
That was. I can hear you guys loud and clear, but I can't see you this time.
Well, in my case, you're not missing much.
That I cannot hear.
All right, well, still mute your microphone.
I will.
Right, I imagine we're being heard, we're being heard here.
We'll move on. So I don't see any of the public comment and I don't see any coming into Q and A that they've had any opportunity to do that. So we'll move on to the next agenda, I don't want to discuss the superintendent's report. Return the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, thank you. Good to see my first graders here, very excited for you and our teachers. So we're really excited about that. I do want to start off with some news, really hot off the press here. I had sent out a document to the community explaining that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had approved, or they recognized our attestation of being over 80% at the high school and had approved us dropping the mask mandates at the high school for vaccinated individuals pending the decision of the school committee and Department of Health. Within the hours since I sent that, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education called me back to inform me that because we were a middle high school, that that wasn't the case, even though I thought I was explicit with that and certainly all of my materials showed that. So we're now being viewed as a middle high school again. So I'll be able to share some information with you as we get into it. But this was certainly beyond my control and I have the official documents to prove that. But it is a, the DESI does send their apologies regarding us. And no, the good part is that nothing had been done and we were in the mode of, because we have a process with everything we do, of deliberating, making decisions, listening to the community, to our staff, to whoever might be, you know, adding input and then making decisions. So, but as it is now, we are not approved because we are being looked at as a building as opposed to an individual school. To whatever my part in that confusion, which was really relaying the message, I do apologize. So.
But nevertheless, you had expressly stated to them that there were shared faces. So that this wasn't something that they would have discovered, they knew that prior to issuing the authorization and I guess upon further deliberation and just generally adding to the overall flavor of the entire experience, decided to retract that. So that's fine.
Yeah, and as the world turns, right? I mean, sometimes there's nothing you can do about, about these things.
Fine.
But having said that.
Reminding us of why we're all here.
Right. I mean, we do other things than talk about masks and vaccination attestations. But actually, I'd like to start off, if I could, with just an update. And I do have one of our amazing superintendent school committee advisory council members. Jenna, who is a, Jenna is a senior and Jenna has presented here before. And Jenna, I'll turn it over to you to talk about anything that is happening for you, your classmates and in the schools as an update. And then of course, the committee, you can always ask questions until anything comes up.
Great.
Questions about, so you're going to figure it out.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to just say that I'm very excited to be here for my first formal in-person update ever. I started this last year over Zoom, so this is really exciting for me to be here in person. Obviously, this week at CHS is very, very busy and exciting as it's homecoming week. So every day is a spirit day and seniors have their own spirit days separate from the underclassmen, which is something special that we get to have since we haven't really had many class-specific activities because we've never, I don't know, last year was hard because COVID and then this year. It's really great that we just meet in the student lot every morning and take pictures and get to be outside without masks with everyone. It's been a really great way to bond with my classmates because last year we were separate for most of the year. So that's been really awesome. And this year's, this week, sorry, sports are really prominent. We had senior night for a girls' field hockey last night. Boys soccer has a game tonight against Marshfield and tomorrow's girls' soccer senior night. So I'm looking forward to that. And then Friday is obviously homecoming night and then we have the dance in the evening and a pep rally during the day on the turf. So that's something that the students have been a little bit, there's been some feedback about having the pep rally outside as opposed to inside because I know, speaking on behalf of the students, a lot of us don't really care about wearing the masks anymore and we're just used to it. So having a pep rally inside like normal doesn't affect us that much. And I think a lot of the students were hoping to have it inside in the gym, but obviously that raises problems about moving the lunch tables and all that. But we don't really care about having to wear masks anymore. But I know doing it outside will still be great and we're all looking forward to it. So that's pretty much it for this week. It's a quick update. The rest of the school year has been moving really smoothly and I think all the teachers and the students have been doing a great job getting back into a normal schedule, somewhat normal. And it's just been really awesome and I'm really happy that we're back into a somewhat normal year.
Thank you, Jenna.
Yeah.
And I should mention that the superintendent advisory council is doing some great work regarding subcommittees for compass points. So teaching and learning, social emotional learning, communication and engagement and resources. And really digging in and doing some survey work with students in an effort to gather student voice. And then they're going to be talking to some of our leaders in those areas to really be able to impart some of their voice to them to make change. You know, the biggest part of our new strategic plan to me is student agency and student voice. So I'm very excited about increasing our respect for Jenna as a good example of that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jenna?
Any questions? Dylan?
No questions, thank you for the update.
Yeah, of course.
Journey?
Thank you for the update.
Yeah, thank you.
Stay on.
Um, what's been your favorite spirit day so far?
I'm looking forward to tomorrow. Actually, it's Hollywood Day, so my friends and I were all dressing up as our favorite, or not even our favorite, but like famous people that we can think we can like put a funny spin on.
Perfect.
Today was funny too. It was USA Day and a lot of people dressed up as like colonial rebels as opposed to just wearing regular USA clothes, which made me laugh, but.
Hilarious. I loved his workout day on Monday.
It's always funny.
I just love Spirit Week. Maybe we could get in on it next year.
Yeah, the teachers have been doing Spirit Week too.
Yeah, love it.
Yeah.
It was quite fast, if you had the patriotic day.
Yes, yes.
You were saying then they had Red Sox day at the middle of the, I just wore a Red Sox tie because it's kind of patriotic too.
Yeah.
It was all over the high school today. It was really fun.
Yeah, it was funny.
Really, really good. Now we had, and as, and other, other, if you have anything, I'm sorry.
I had a question for Jenna, because I know she's a student athlete. Jenna, do you know if the girls' teams are referred to as the lady skippers?
So that's kind of been a name that's been, like, we've been referred to that from flyers or the boosters or parents. But honestly, we don't call ourselves lady skippers, we just call ourselves the skippers because we just see ourselves like any other athletic team that's offered at our school. And I just think the students and boys and girls, like when the boys come cheer us on, they just call us the skippers and when we go cheer them on, we just call them the skippers too. But we just like, for example, we had a breast cancer awareness tonight a couple of weeks ago and we had a poster made for us that said lady skippers and then the boys had theirs tonight and there just said skippers on it. But we're like, obviously, we root for the same school, we're playing for the same team, like we, I mean, we can be called the same name.
Yeah, so I think we should work towards ensuring that that is done with uniformity. I think that qualifying the girls' teams is unacceptable. And I'm sure, I'd ask you as a student athlete, female student athlete, I'm sure that you prefer.
Yeah, we, I would say so, the whole, my whole team, we all call ourselves just the skippers for that, yeah.
You know that I am oftentimes the head of a elementary girl platoon of fans in soccer games and I know that they don't refer you as the lady skippers, but I think we should be active in ensuring that that's not the case in the district.
Definitely.
Because our female student athletes are precisely the same and represent the same school as our male student athletes.
Right.
And often get very successful results.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Playing field. So I just, I was curious about that, thanks for.
Of course, yeah.
Well, thank you, Jenna, I'll let you know.
Of course, Jenna. Thank you so much, it was great seeing you all.
It's lovely to have Jenna.
You know, I've seen you. You just couldn't hear when you're on Zoom. You're doing so well.
Right, so the moment we've all been waiting.
Yeah, of course, yeah. We are very excited to have some incredibly special guests along with, as well as.
And that's them, right?
Mrs. Philows and Mrs. Karaba. And I'm going to let Principal Farrell take it from here. I can't even begin to tell you how exciting this is to have you present. So thank you all for being here, thank you teachers and Principal Farrell.
So I get the pleasure of introducing two of our many fabulous first grade teachers, actually many of our fabulous teachers across the board. So we have Jenna Phillips.
Mrs. Farrell, can you come over here a little bit more? So this, this is like the microphone and it has a certain radius, so can you like come closer to us?
Oh, she can't, anyway, okay, all right. Just as long as not for seeing purposes, okay, so.
Well, I do have the presentation on, you can't see it, but maybe if one flip, they could help us to put it on there, they can see it on that screen. But it is up and I will walk through.
Yeah, I understood, yeah.
All right, so.
How complicated, Mrs. Farrell.
Yeah, I know. Ready, ready. So I want to take the, just a moment to thank the parents also. It's a Wednesday night, it's after six o'clock. I'm sure you have rituals that you like to do at home. So coming out and doing this was absolutely huge, thank you. If I remember correctly, and I could be wrong, I think this is the first time we've had, there have been seniors and juniors and sophomores at the high school present. We've had middle school present, we've had Deer Hill present. So I was telling my friends here that the first group to present from the Osgood to the school committee, so that's pretty exciting. And I'm going to let Jenna Phillips and Kate Nakaraba take over because they have the honor of working with these children.
Hi.
Thank you. So would you like us over there?
Please, yeah.
So thank you for having us. This is Caitlin and I'm Jen and we are first grade teachers along with fabulous friends in the audience that are also first grade teachers on our team. And so we have been spending the first 28, 29 days as firsties, learning about orthographic mapping and what that means to store words in your brain very automatically rather than through rote memorization. And partnering with TLA and doing some work with foundations, which is our phonics and phonemic awareness program. Our firsty friends are learning how to sound out words that are irregular. We call them trick words and learning the parts that they need to know by heart. And hence, the entire this evening. So I know you are, Patrick Sullivan, changing the slideshow, right?
I can.
So I know we can't see it, so.
Yeah, I know. And the little, the other little issue is that if I, if I show it on the screen, then it minimizes you, so, but I'm. Minimize the image of you.
Got it, perfect, perfect.
It's on there now.
Perfect. So back to orthographic mapping, take it over Caitlin.
So we have been practicing these trick words that we now are calling part words because the whole word is not irregular. We don't need to memorize the whole word, we just need to memorize one part or two parts of the word that are irregular and that's the part that we need to know by heart. So we have been doing a lot of work around this, part words and trick words. We, in our presentation, you will see that we have our own way of practicing them and writing them in class. And every 10 words that we do goes home to practice. So we just made it to our first 10 that we have been working on. So we have a short little video on the next slide, I believe, that kind of goes along with what we've been talking about orthographic mapping and how heart words lead them to that.
And if you go one more.
Yeah.
Just one more. There you go, there you go. And it's a video that hopefully the grownups at home can see. Wish everybody can.
Let's learn about heart words.
Can you hear loud there?
Words we learn and know by heart. When we know something by heart, it means we know it without having to think about it. When we learn these words by heart, we will remember them. We'll be able to look at these words and know what they say right away. Sometimes what we know about letters will not help us read all the parts of a heart word. Some heart words have tricky parts that we will need to remember. When we learn about these tricky parts, it will help us read our heart words and lots of other words too. Learning our heart words will be fun, so let's get started.
So back to us. So my firsty friends, Amanda and Robyn, going to be with all the friends. So in foundations, we have met our first 10 trick words, parts that you need to know by heart. So each of the friends chose a word that they needed to learn by heart. And we're going to show you how we activate our powers, how we tap out the sounds that we hear in the words, how we blend them together, and then we talk about the part that we need to know by heart. So we'll start with Neela. Neela, do you remember the trick word that's on your heart? It's the word into.
Echo me.
Echo me. Into.
Into.
Elbows up. Activate your powers. Activate, let's tap out into.
In. Mm.
S. Ooh. Into. Neela, what's the trick? The part that you need to know by heart in the word into? The O's and I would be all, Neela. It's making the double O sound, it's saying, ooh. Get your brain, Neela, nice job. True. What word are you wearing on your heart today, good sir? As.
Echo me. Echo me.
As.
As.
Ready to tap it out? Elbows up. Activate the power. Ready, let's tap out as.
As.
As. True, what's the part you need to know by heart? It's the matter with the S. It does, it's in a bad mood and it's hurting. It's just your brain, Drew, nice job. Nani, you have the same word. Want to try it though? Shh, okay, ready? Echo me.
Echo me.
As.
As.
Ready, elbows up. Activate the power. Let's tap it.
As.
As. Nani, what's the part you need to know by heart?
E.
E. Yeah, the S, but it's making the Z sound, right? Get your brain, they're running, they're straight. I'm saying, Robyn, I'm doing. Nani, I'm going to start with you. What word do you have on your heart?
Has.
Has. Echo me.
Echo me.
Has.
Has.
Activate those powers. Shh, I stand.
Ha. As.
Has. Nani, what's the tricky part in has?
The S.
Why?
Because it's saying the Z.
It's making that Z sound. Wonderful job, Nani. Clara, what word do you have on your heart?
As.
As. Echo me.
Echo me.
As.
As.
Activate those powers. Shh, let's tap.
As.
As. Now, after, what's the tricky part?
The S.
Why?
Because it sounds like a B.
It's making that Z sound. Wonderful job, Clara. And what's the not least?
Clara's got a good one.
He has a great one. This one has some many special things about it. Jenna, what word do you have on your heart?
La.
La. Echo me.
Echo me.
La.
La.
Activate those powers. Shh, let's tap it.
Mm. Uh.
La. What's the tricky part that you need to know by heart in the word la? The what? The E. Why?
Because it's the U.
It's making that U, that U sound. But there's another special part about this word. What is it?
The diagram.
It has a diagram. We've been working very hard to talk about diagrams. What is that diagram? What letters?
A.
T H, and that means that there's two letters.
Two letters that stick together to make words.
But, but we didn't get all our firsty friends here, not all the Lightning McPeeksters and the Robyn and the Doos, but you might see them on the screen. Don't judge the dance moves, please.
Or the video.
Or the video, babe. I'm just going to do the video, babe. Don't stop.
There we go, all right.
I can't see it from there.
I can see it from there.
You can see it, good. You can see it, okay. You see it. You make it. Echo me. Echo me. Ready? As. As. Echo me. Echo me. Heart is the heart. No part of our key to know by heart. Heart is the heart. Know by heart. You need to know by heart. As. Double tap. Activate the power. Activate the power. Echo into. I. E. E. Friends. Echo me. Echo me. Heart is the heart. Know by heart. You need to know by heart.
Great job, guys. Thank you so much. That was wonderful. That was so wonderful. Maybe next time you can bring a hat for Mr. Dial.
Yes, I need one. And I need that superpower, too. That was really great. Thank you for being so.
Don't ask for things that you.
Oh, good. Right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Brava, Ms. Brava. Farrell, and of course, students. You guys were amazing. They're not the man. It's right on time.
So, thank you, Carter.
I don't know if you have any questions, um, me?
Oh, I don't. But, uh, Mr. Dial, do you have any questions?
No, they answered my question about the tricky part in each of those words very well. So, thank you much.
Mr. Dary?
Well done. Well done.
Mr. Darn?
Great job, everyone. Nice, strong voices and great spelling powers.
Right. Thank you, guys. Almost bedtime.
Thank you for the wonderful, wonderful teaching and preparing these kids. Just fantastic. Yeah, good job, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, boys and girls and families.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, parents.
These are highlights. All night.
Just a reminder while we're here.
Lance, problem.
Oh.
I'm dying.
I want you to get on.
Yeah, for the rest of me.
That's a tough one, Lance.
Rick Bart, I'm getting nervous. I was getting nervous. You know what Rick Bart does work?
I do.
Do you? Yeah.
This is the A.
It's actually a glued sound, Mr. Dial.
So, A glued sound.
Mr. Darn, does all the answer on that? Okay. Well, that was, that was.
That's pretty.
And now, got to the most wonderful topic on the planet.
We need a theme song.
Safety update. So, I'm gonna share my screen, um, so I can, because I hope you can hear. I'll, I'll kind of go through it. Uh, obviously, we had a, had a detour in our, in, in, and it's funny. I just got another apology email come in as I was presenting. So, it's, uh, you know, it's a fluid situation and our timing was, it could have been good because we had school committee right after the, at the station was accessible. But I did want to share some of the just updates regarding where we are, sort of a, an addition to what I had done on the sixth, I believe it was the sixth, over six. And just kind of move from there and talk about a few considerations that we have. So, as you might not be able to see, I don't know if one foot three can help us with the, the screen. There we go.
There it is.
You can see, uh, this is our Tronica acid confirmed cases and how, uh, it's kind of in October, we're pretty stable. We've, we've fluctuated from the gray back into the, the green, but, you know, we're, we're, we're doing okay as, as a town in terms of our current places. Same thing with our, our confirmed positive cases for our staff and students. We had, and this is including this week, probably 10, uh, cases total. Where, and when I say that, that means staff and students who have, um, been, uh, been diagnosed with positive, uh, COVID. Again, we have no, um, confirmed transmissions in school, so I'll get to some of the specifics on that. And, uh, thankfully, we've had no quarantines resulting from in-person contact, uh, to anyone, largely due to our, I believe, our spacing, um, and our vaccination rates, uh, which is, which is great. So, we're, we're moving on nicely there. Um, this is a chart that actually shows, you can see it on the screen here, that shows the, the weekends. This is what I send to the community every Thursday. I did add what we know this, this week so far. But you can see, uh, that, that shows you the 10 cases, um, and how we're progressing. This is a little bit of an awkward chart. I, I thought of keeping it or not keeping it, but yeah, I thought it was important just as a snapshot of time to see how many kids are actually quarantining in our entire district for each week. Some of these, they carry over it from one way to another, so it's not an exact count. And some of these are the actual students who were, were in that tent, although it's not all students. Uh, and this is staff too. So, staff. But you can see where we are really not dealing with, uh, and, and so, uh, quarantines. And, uh, and again, all of these quarantines are from extramural exposure. Vaccination makes, and this hasn't changed in a, in a few weeks or a couple of weeks anyway, but GoHassit has, uh, had, and this is eligible, has had 83% of its eligible population fully vaccinated and 8% at least partially vaccinated. It may be one dose of Pfizer or one dose of the Moderna. Now, this is an important number. This is, and I, I want to make it clear, this is on the 13th of October. But according to our nurses, it hasn't shifted very much. So, as you know, we're shooting for now, clearly, our mission is to shoot for, uh, 80% for the entire building, middle and high school. But I want you to know where these numbers are coming from. So, using our Massachusetts Immunization Information System, not even going with attestations that might have come in, um, by other means that the state had, uh, had granted was, was viable. We have 86% of our students of the high school, um, vaccinated. Now, our staff attestation as of the 13th was only 63%. So, remember, the total number when we're dealing with it is a, is a, is a, it's basically a percentage of the, all of the people that are in your building. That's anybody who's working in your building and the students. So, you know, as you can see, our staff attestation was, was not as high as I would have hoped it would be. Our, um, but it's, it's a, it's a choice. It's a choice if they do it. I, I really can't speak to that. Um, but the total attestation percentage at the high school came to 82%, which originally had got us over the hump. But we had to also factor in our middle school. I want to make sure that everyone's aware that, um, our sixth graders, uh, they are not, um, that only 35% of them will be of eligible age with our sixth graders, meaning they turn 12 by January for us. So, that pulls down the opportunity for, right now, for our sixth graders to be vaccinated. And that also makes an impact on the total amount of students who are showing vaccination. But it's a still fairly high number. It's 58. Now, our staff attestation was 52% um, um, as of the 13th. So, that did, uh, bring our numbers to a 57%. And if you factor in both buildings, that's everybody. We're at 71.4%, which means that we need 76 more people. 76 more people to either attest or, or become vaccinated and be able to attest it, to bring us to the 80% as an entire building, so that we would be at the point where we would be having that decision. Okay? So, you can see the numbers and how we might be able to improve in that regard. Um, and I wrote that in. There you go. Total vaccination attestation in the building is 17. That's in the whole building, 71.4%. Um, we need 76 more attestations to reach the 80% as a building. Uh, right now, our Deer Hill staff attestations were 49% and our Uswood staff was 38%. Uh, as we're, I mean, obviously, there's those students who are eligible to be vaccinated in those schools. And, and that's really it, um, that I, I wanted to share right now because, you know, clearly, we're not at the point where we can have that, that deeper discussion that will lead to a decision. But I'm hopeful that the attestations come up some so that we can, uh, we can approach that in a future meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Sol. Ask a question? Um, you may, um, go ahead. Then, then we, uh, we, um, representative of the CTA that wanted to make a statement. Perfect. I imagine regarding this subject, given the signs that are. Yeah, that, that, well, I guess, um, Dr. Sol, and maybe this will come up when, when the CTA, um, makes a statement. Um, you have a, I was, I was surprised at the low level of attestations among staff. Um, and I know it's a choice and I, I respect that, but, you know, when you're looking at Massachusetts as a whole, we're, we're in a number that starts with an A. And I'm seeing numbers on new presentations starting with 6, 5, and 3, which is, which is a big delta. Uh, I guess, do you have a sense of, is there, if there's a uneasiness among staff of, of getting the vaccination, concerns with vaccination, or if there's anything that the district could do to encourage further vaccinations?
Well, actually, I think the district did a great deal to encourage vaccinations. We worked with the Marshfield, uh, community to provide, um, almost 200 vaccination appointments. Uh, our PSO worked very closely to try to provide, uh, teachers with vaccination times. We let teachers, uh, have, have, uh, they were able to go and get vaccinations and we covered for them as necessary. I think we did a great deal to encourage vaccinations. So, you know, it, it is a personal choice and, uh, it, no one's forcing the teacher to, to be vaccinated at this point. So, I do have to respect that choice and I have to believe that because I haven't heard it else, you know, in any other way, that, that this is just a choice, um, to maybe not get vaccinated. So, maybe I was incorrect on the amount of teachers who were vaccinated because the attestations aren't, aren't showing that. But that's just my, um, my, my thoughts on it because I certainly gave the same information that I gave to families and, uh, to, to them to attest it. These are really intelligent people who know that really, what all they had to do was write a note, test that they were vaccinated to show a vaccination card, which I gladly did to our school members in the high school, um, with very little error. So, I, I think it must just be a, uh, a, a choice issue or, uh, or maybe they're just choosing not to be vaccinated.
All right. Well, Dan, is there any pressing questions? I, I wanted to give the representative of the CTA. I, I don't know who that is. I know that in the presence of the president of the CTA, he may be being represented. So, I invite the CTA to make their statement and then.
I'm gonna sit down if you don't mind.
Have a seat. Close you up to the mic.
Thank you. Thank you. And this is okay? You can hear and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Um, thank you. And I'll, I'll gladly take some questions later on, even on that issue. Um, I can give my own speculation on that, but, um, so first off, um, as president of the CTA, I'm, you know, um, I'm gonna speak for the CTA here. Um, we have some prepared remarks based upon the expectation that there was going to be a vote on the removal of masks in the high school. Obviously, that's on hold right now for a bit, but isn't looking in the future. So, excuse me if I have to switch tenses every now and then from present to, to future sort of things here, but, um, so, um, as president of the CTA, we'd like to thank the Cohasset School Committee for the opportunity to address you this evening, as you deliberate eventually, on removing masks in the high school. Uh, there are a few critical concerns that need to be addressed if you decide to alter the current mask policy for the district. Uh, first, according to DESE requirements, unvaccinated students are still required to wear masks in school. Since student vaccine status can't be revealed to staff and without knowing which students are vaccinated and which are not, unvaccinated students will be unlikely to wear masks when their peers aren't. With 82% or so of the students and staff reporting that they are vaccinated, the remaining students are not and they will be at considerable risk if all students are unmasked. Second, uh, students in the hallways and common areas are not staying three feet apart. Uh, kids are back to being kids and trying to manage the minimal social distancing, social distancing requirements uh, has been an impossible task in some cases. Uh, in some high school classrooms, it is impossible to have desks three feet apart all the time. Uh, many students, some unvaccinated and possibly unmasked, will be within three feet of each other for 80-minute periods of time in small classrooms. The bottom line is that the kids, vaccinated and unvaccinated alike, will be in very close contact frequently during their day. However useful masks are, the CTA does not advocate for keeping masks on, even though many individuals and public health advocates support that. The state has given school committees the power to decide whether to remove mask requirements in buildings with certain vaccination thresholds if they feel that is best for their districts. If this committee chooses to unmask our students, the CTA feels, and we are sure the school committee agrees, that this should be done as safely as possible. For these reasons, we submit to you these signed petitions from all the different schools, from the members of the CTA encouraging you to participate in enhanced COVID testing for the safety of our children. Forefront in this effort is the state's free test and stay program that is paid for by the state and will help provide staff for districts that apply. Currently, over 2,200 schools across Massachusetts are taking part. State government is so committed to its success, they have even activated the National Guard to help staff the program. Local communities such as Duxbury, Norwell, Situate, Hull, and Hangham are all taking part with great success. A staff member in the district and parent of a Hangham elementary student has seen how test and stay works in Hangham. Their principal recently reported that about 44 students in elementary school were close contacts and were able to stay in school because of test and stay. Why this Cohasset administration has refused to participate while so many others are successfully doing so is puzzling. While it is true that in its current form, test and stay has a significant void and that the DESE intends it for in-school contacts, uh, this does not have to be. Personally, I've been in contact with state senators Patrick O'Connor and Sue Moran, as well as state representative Capella Natra. Uh, I may agree that the state needs to expand the program and are contacting the relevant state authorities to push them to expand this program for all students who had close contacts with positive cases. Uh, in fact, I had the pleasure of meeting with Senator O'Connor this afternoon. I zoomed with him at 3 o'clock today. Uh, he asked me to relate to the school committee that he is a supporter of test and stay and believes that any obstacles to kids staying in the classroom should be removed. Uh, this week, he's promised to craft a letter, uh, to the DESE encouraging them to expand the test and stay program to include all student close contacts. Uh, but even if the state does not see reason and expand testing to all contexts, there's no reason why this district can't require testing on its own. In DESE's own guidance, they assert, "School committees and executive boards may set additional policies beyond those provided in the guidance, so long as those policies meet the minimum structured learning time requirements." Participating in test and stay program would create a framework that allows the district to provide tests for any students who need them. Over the past few weeks, as we saw in the numbers, uh, fewer than 20 students are still, by our count, uh, have had to quarantine due to outside contacts. Uh, the cost for the rapid buy next now test used last spring, or their equivalent, would be easily manageable for such a low number of students and would have the benefit of keeping the kids in school. If testing isn't open to all who have had close contacts, unvaccinated students, like all of our elementary kids, will not be able to attend school, even if they are asymptomatic, uh, for at least seven days, according to DESE protocol. The only option for them is quarantine. I know parents would agree that supervising their kids around the kitchen table as they zoom into a classroom is not a successful model for teaching students. As was experienced last year, students suffered socially and emotionally as a result. Everyone here knows the best place for healthy students to learn is in the classroom. And this school committee itself stated that on numerous times last spring. So, why wouldn't the district pursue every avenue that it can to keep the kids in the classroom and relieve the families of Cohasset the burden of keeping otherwise healthy kids at home? Moreover, what, this is my biggest concern here, is that you're gonna put on parents a dilemma. What if their child is a, child is a close contact outside of school and they have to choose between losing work and staying home with a healthy-looking child or sending them to school and possibly risking exposure to others? Putting parents in that situation is truly not fair. This school committee needs to do the right thing for the families of Cohasset and let the kids come to school if they are not positive. This can be done with the state's testing programs and just a little extra effort. If that is still too difficult, at least answer the question for the community. Why is the district so determined to put the burden on parents, students, and teachers when there's a viable and inexpensive solution which the district can implement that safeguards our children and keeps them in class where they belong? I look forward to hearing your discussion over the next few weeks. Uh, if you have any questions regarding, you know, things, I'm willing to answer those now if you'd like.
Sure. Um, if you have questions, I'll start, uh, very briefly.
Mr. Darn, thank you for your, your presentation. Very nice, uh, drafted letter. Uh, you raised some, some good points. Um, there's, I'll, I'll, I'll share with you my thinking on test and stay in particular. And you can help me if I've misunderstood something or have it wrong because the way I understand it, because of our spacing requirements within our school, it's mathematically impossible for the.
for there to be an in-school close contact. Therefore, test and stay, as its current form, limited only to in-school close contacts, will serve no purpose. Now, if that's incorrect, then, you know, help me understand where that, where I went wrong.
Sure. Two things. One, as I mentioned before, the kids are everywhere. As we're getting back to group work, as we're doing other things.
You can add Bobby in here.
Oh, sorry. As we're working with students in the classroom, as we're moving back and forth, as the kids are in close contact with each other.
Are they in close contact for more than 15 minutes, which I think is the standard?
Yeah. Eighty minutes, one day.
So we're not following our.
But mathematically.
Okay, so first of all, Mr. Earlson has acted as representative, so we're not going to have people shouting in the audience. It's not going to happen, don't do it. Okay? So Mr. Earlson is representative of the CTA, and he's more than capable of representing his, as he has for as long as I've been chairing this.
Did I just say just a quick lie?
Yes.
We are signed up for test and stay.
Are we now? When did that happen?
It happened this week.
Oh, excellent.
But let me explain a couple things.
Sure.
We, right now, it's test and stay, if anybody's listening out there. Test and stay is only available for those students who have to quarantine because they're close contact based on intraschool exposure. We have had zero, zero situations where anyone has had intraschool exposure that is required a quarantine. I am not against test and stay. The district is not against test and stay. We added the layer of spacing to prevent those quarantines. I've signed up because I recognize that as we move forward, we may need to go there. I have no problem going there. The issue is that, right now, we can't use test and stay for extramural quarantines. That, it would be a totally different story. And I'm committed, I just want to say this to everyone, to providing our students who do have extramural quarantining needs to have as much connection as they possibly can in the classroom. And I think it's our teachers' responsibility, and me helping with that, to provide that, because every single kid deserves that in our community. And I just want to say that. But I would never stop at providing anything for our students, and I hope the CTA will do the same.
My response to that would be, again, from the DESE's own guidance, school committees and executive boards may set additional policies beyond those provided in the guidelines. Now, obviously, if we expand that to extramural contacts, it might be a cost that has to be borne by the district.
We can't.
It says right here. What did the other, have we talked to Hame? Have you talked to other areas and what they're doing there?
You cannot, I've talked to all of them, talked to them all often. You cannot do extramural contacts. If I could, I would think it would be a much more.
What statutes or what law are you violating? What statute or regulation are you violating by offering outside contact testing to parents so that kids don't have to quarantine at home?
It's not part of the program. I don't know.
It's not part of the program, but you can expand it. It's for power to do so.
I think the issue is we're required to quarantine, and the test and stay has exemption for quarantine, but the exemption is only available for in-school contacts. So if you're in contact out of school, the exemption created by test and stay doesn't apply, and therefore, we are required just to require the kids.
The DESE will not provide the funding for that?
It's not a funding issue. It's actually the, as I understand it, the requirements of DESE on quarantine. It's a quarantine requirement, and we can't get exempted from that quarantine requirement unless we use test and stay, which is only available for in-school. So test and stay for extramural, whether we want it to or not, under DESE guidelines, does not permit us to exempt kids from the quarantine requirement if they're close contact with COVID outside of school.
Sounds like what Mr. Earlson is suggesting is that the district is for testing for extramural, and it's not test and stay, folks. That's testing that you would do for people who are outside coming in. That would be creating our own program, because what you're speaking of is not the test and stay program.
The test and stay program.
But if that's what you're asking, I respect.
Yes.
But I think we should, I don't think we should have any sort of fusion around what test and stay is and what you're asking.
So to me, I see.
It didn't sound like the district is advocating for test and stay, which is not true.
To do.
You're asking for something that would be logical.
To make sure we have these kids not staying home and quarantining and getting them in the classrooms, yeah. So the test and stay, to me, is the foundational piece, where that's put into place. We have that, it's there, the staffing from the state, the money from the state, whatever. And then, as we decide as a school committee, then we can add on that extra layer of testing so that these kids do not have to stay at home if they're healthy, if they test negative. You could use the same framework, even if you're using tests that are provided by the district as opposed from the DESE. That is what we're proposing, that's what we think. You know, I think you should ask one of the 2,200 schools out there, and I have no doubt that they're using this for all contacts. I can't imagine them not.
No, they're not.
They would not? They were going to have quarantine? Are they quarantining their students?
That's false information. Better they are not. I mean, I'm with superintendents all the time. That is not part of the program.
Then they're going to keep the kids home for seven days when they could have them in? I think this is something that we could probably take on and be a little bit more proactive on.
If we just speak one at a time, I know what I'm excited about, just speak one at a time, because it's getting hard for people to understand who's saying what, and there are students watching, and we need to conduct ourselves appropriately, so just speak one at a time.
No, I just, we have a difference of opinion. So, you know, I'm the superintendent, looking at implementing the program, working with all the superintendents, and I know for a fact that it's not designed to be used for extramural, quarantine in close contacts. It's not designed for that. So if the CTA is asking the district to consider testing in some other program.
Diagnostic.
Diagnostic testing, it's a bit of a difference. I understand that, but to blur it into we're not advocating for test and stay, as I said, we haven't had one situation yet in the district where we would have had a scenario where we would do test and stay. I'll be really specific about that, very clear, but we are preparing for the cases that may come up where we will do that. That's really all I want to say on that. I just felt it was necessary me to correct that, because it seems like a lot's been blurred. That's not prepared.
And I agree, the test and stay program has a major flaw, and that's why I contacted the state senators and why they are contacting DESE. So hopefully, they will change that policy, because we have a huge hole in the program where we need to get kids in the classroom if they can be there. And to me, that's something that we could push, that you could push that envelope a bit and advance a policy that gets the kids in the classroom. I would love to find out what the parents think, if they would, you know, if their kids are at a sporting event somewhere, they're in contact with somebody else, and now they have to decide, would they want this policy? And I can't imagine any parent saying, oh, no, I'd much rather sit around the kitchen table with them for a week. This is the best thing for the students. And I think that's what's obvious. Talking to the senator today, he was like, why wouldn't you do this? I'm going to send a letter right away. It is clearly the right thing to do, and I think with a little bit of extra effort, our community could do that, and maybe show the way then for other communities and be that example for others. You had two parts to the question before, and I don't know if you answered.
Before we start here, just to, I think we all agree with you that the number one thing that we can do is keep kids in school, and we want to do everything we can to do that. And we're, and if our senator is successful in getting that program changed such that it can apply to extramural activities, I think we'll have a different discussion around this day, because then there's some real value there. But right now, you know, it's of questionable value, given other things. We're hearing some new news about whether or not we're able to comply with our three-foot distancing, so we can look into that, but I, that would be a, that would be a big change.
MTA Legal says that there is no limitation on the school committee's power to expand testing. And so that's my understanding. If that's not the case, you talk to the own school council and find out those things.
We could, we can, we can look at what we want to do for additional testing, diagnostic testing. Excuse me. I do want to get to the second thing, which is related, which is the attestation numbers reported here were seemed to be very low on the part of the staff. And, you know, we're talking about additional testing and making sure our students are safe, and one way to make sure students are safe is having the most vaccinated individuals we can. So it is a concern to me as a committee member that we're seeing such low numbers among staff, if that's an accurate reflection of our vaccination status.
So first off, back in the spring, when we were concerned about vaccines status and all that, we polled our own members, and we found more than 99% vaccinated. So that, that's the number that they attested to us. Just this month, here, again, back on 9/20, I have the emails right here from the superintendent asking about vaccine status. After he sent that, I did reply to him later on here about some issues I thought were in the request, and that a lot of staff, I know myself included, when we vaccinated last year, we told our nurses. And so a lot of us thought, we told you. You know, we didn't know that wasn't being tracked, or actually, I still don't know. I asked, and I have not heard back if that was being tracked or not. I'm assuming it wasn't, because obviously, we're here now talking about these numbers. Others too, there was no deadline for the staff, it was just kind of like, do this, and teachers being teachers, we have a lot of stuff going on, so that just puts it on the back burner while you get everything else done. So finally, once it became close to the due date here, we received an email from the superintendent that was kind of problematic in that, in the statement, it said, you know, our nurses reported to me that the attestation from staff is currently significantly low. Therefore, it will be clear to the community that if we do not make the 80% vaccination rate at the high school, it will be due to low staff attestation. And a lot of people took offense to that, whether or not that was intended, I doubt it, but they're like, what? I mean, just not, not feeling very respected in that case. And so I think that lowered the numbers a bit, too. I know some staff members were concerned that those numbers are going to be used to remove masks and the health possibilities that could, the negative health consequences that come from that. These are all comments that people have made to me. As it was, we did communicate to our members various times that this is a legitimate ask. We are required through ADA to supply vaccine status of ask. So we did ask them and tell them that that's, should be fine to do, but again, these are individual people, we're not a model left, unfortunately.
So I guess I would have an ask for them. If this is a disconnect between attestation and reality, rather than a lack of vaccination, if you could do what you could do to encourage cooperation amongst the attestations, I know, I was asked twice by my employer, and they said, hey, we didn't get your vaccine card. They lost it. I didn't say, well, I'm not going to respond. I just said, okay, yes, I'm vaccinated, I'll attest again. It was not a huge burden. And, you know, I know there are other policy issues that come out of that, those are handled by the state, but, you know, we need to work together through this.
I agree.
And cooperate, and let each other know what's going on. And having good numbers, whether they have been asked before or not, or whether we need to revalidate them or not, is really critical to us understanding our position with respect to this pandemic. And if you could, using your perch, help us get the information we need from staff to understand what our best course of action would be, I personally would be very much appreciative, I think the community would as well.
I would definitely do so, and I think this exposes kind of more of a root problem behind it, in that over the past year and a half, there has been somewhat of a loss of trust in the leadership by the staff. Through various decisions, we've all worked really hard, and it's been a rough time, but there is that undercurrent there. And if you really are serious about trying to get to the bottom, I think, you know, bringing in a third party to kind of find out what is going on in the district's morale would probably be a very positive thing to do to get through this, because I think right now, there is, there is a difficulty in communication on both sides, and I think we need to get through that to, for the benefit of our students, so.
I understand that you stopped in order to test to be vaccinated because of a lack of trust in administration.
In the use of the information in the administration, I think that was there. I mean, I'm speculating right now, but I think a third party to come in to ask, find out, would be a good thing to do.
There are 59 staff who have not tested as of the 13. If those 59, if you said it was 100%, if they had tested, it would be 17 short, just so the community knows. Seven, six. I think, I just want to put something, I just want to move this along. I want to say that, first of all, teachers, I'm a parent, we're all parents here, every single school committee member has children in the school. That said, I think I can speak to the committee. Thank you. Thank you for taking care of our children. Thank you for doing what you do. I think that we have such a great teaching environment. I do want to say this, as a parent, I 100% support Superintendent Sullivan. I think he has the best interests of the children 100%. I've seen over the last two years, I've seen, trying to, we had Fox News to come down and stick a camera in his car. I think that's totally inappropriate. I don't like to see that. Our community doesn't want to see that. I speak for parents that saw that, that it was, it was a pretty big stain on the teachers. And I know that doesn't represent you, okay? We're all in this together, okay? So if we can come up with a consensus that we're all here to do it, without any kind of, you do this, and you do that, we're just all on the same page. That's all I want to say. And I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Mary, say on.
I'm just curious, and I probably was copied on the email, and as a fellow teacher, didn't have time to fully process it, but what is the process for submitting, like, your, from your understanding?
So it was, we were just asked to give it to a nurse here there, and one of the things I suggested I made was, you know, to have a sample attestation form. Other districts had actually negotiated this, which is something that is, you know, definitely encouraged and preferred in most districts. To, here's a form to use, or here's a link to use. As it was, it was do this at some point in time, and, yeah, as teachers, it's one more thing added on. It will be put on to the back burner until it's, you get that second email, or a third email even, because there's so many other things going on.
Yeah. I'm just curious about ease of submission. I am trying, my school nurse is the one who collected our school data, and I feel like anything at a local community level always feels a little bit more comfortable. And we, she just sent out a Google form, so then we filled out our information, and it went right back to her in our building, and then that was gathered as a district. So it felt like, you know, closer to home, a little cozier. And then we were just re-asked, and I said, you know, is, does this still count, like what I told you in the spring, right after I got vaccinated? She said, yep, that does. So it was, I think, like, the means of collecting information, like, maybe using for teachers, right? But also keeping it closer to home in that in-school, like, building-based collection. I don't know about you. For me, it feels nice, because I know that nurse, and I go to her for ibuprofen, right? So.
And that would have been a wonderful thing to have, a conversation ahead of time, say, how can we get the most information back from teachers? And, you know, I would have loved that conversation.
Sure. But let's have it now.
Sure. It's not, it's never too late.
Do you feel like that would be comfortable? Do you feel like going kind of closer to the proverbial home of, like, in-building and having nurses gathering, or just like, hey, can I just remind her guys, like, it's, I feel like it's more like your mom, right?
Yeah, I wasn't gathering the vaccines, go to the nurses.
Speaking as, speaking as an individual, I think that'd be great. As a president, this is something that we need to go to our, with our bargaining group that we've meet and discuss these things, and there's a process for that that could be followed.
Yeah. I just feel like, can't we just send out a Google form and, like, have it done and just done? I know there's a process, I just.
Sorry, I missed.
What are you charging?
First word, problems.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tengon. Mr. Earlson, thank you. All this is becoming so tedious, and I hope that, I just hope that we can do better in the future, regardless of the first review of the manner in which the attestation was requested of faculty. You're all highly educated people, master's degrees, a lot of you, so you have doctorates. You know, it's not rocket science, firing out an email to the school nurse letting know whether you're vaccinated or not. You just told us 99% of you are, yet we have, you know, in the 50s or 40s or the 30s, kind of, we've got to after this, and, you know, the superintendent of schools, he is the operational head of schools, and he's asked teachers to please test one way or the other, and it just hasn't happened. So, you know, I, you know, I have difficulty getting past the consideration that that must have been partly strategic, but it is what it is, and it's just, it saddens me that we kind of face obstacles. I do, I mean, I address that the faculty on the first day of work for them, not the first day of school where students were there, but, and I meant everything I said. I mean, I valued you, as a teacher, changed my life, but, and so I echo Mr. Kennedy's But so I echo Mr. Kennedy's comments about all of you, each and every one of you. But it's just it's just hard to get over that type of thing. And it just it just, to me, it's a challenge to progress. But, you know, and, you know, in your statement, Mr. Earlson, I just, you know, getting into your question, it seems that most of your position is predicated on the fact that, you mentioned that the vaccinated students were unlikely to wear masks. Oh, I wonder what it is as a classroom instructor, as a practitioner who is in the buildings every day, that leads you to the conclusion that that students would be generally dishonest about that.
As a, I would say, an expert in adolescent psychology with my final first masters, as well as the experience, kids succumb to peer pressure left and right. And if all if wearing a mask, and even though it says in the email, first email today here, that wearing a mask should not be indicative of not being vaccinated, that's what it means. That's what the kids are going to see, and that's what the kids are going to talk about and discuss and point fingers at. Personally, I'm personally, I'm going to wear a mask for this entire school year until I feel confident. And I don't know if I'm ever going to feel confident. I'm going to continue to wear a mask no matter what, if a mask is removed or not, just because there will always be kids who are unvaccinated in my classroom until a vaccine mandate is passed. And until then, I don't want to be, you know, a possible exposure risk for a student who's unvaccinated. And so that's that's my personal choice. And, you know, a lot of the teachers feel the same way. But I mean, I guess the point here, I think, is more that, you know, I would love that the teachers would share their information. I think it's I think the responsible thing to do is that. But if we're really serious about why is there such a gap, you need to ask the teachers why. And whether or not I ask them or you ask them, I think it's better to have a third party come in and do an assessment. We had a person, Lizzy, Louise Dimas, had an administrative kind of review years ago. And that was amazing. The morale in the district increased dramatically because they felt heard. That, I think, is at the root cause here is that while these teachers, you know, their master's degree and so on, we're human beings. We have feelings. We need to be treated as if we have those. And a lot of people in the past few years here have been a little bit ignored. So I think personally, that's my opinion. I would love to find out what everyone feels. And I think, you know, bringing someone in to find out would be good. It'd be good for the health of the district and the education of these students without a doubt.
So just getting back to my question, don't you think that the parents would have some influence on whether or not the unvaccinated students wore masks? And you're saying it's just completely up to them. And you're laughing at me. I mean, I feel like.
No, it's because, you know, the kid dresses up, dresses, puts their stuff next to school. Soon they get to the bus stop, whatever, they take whatever the parents made them wear and they wear what they want. It's just it's just adolescent nature. They want to be like the others. They want to fit in. And wearing a mask is like, boom, look at me, I'm different. And that's not what adolescents want to feel.
Our kids are wearing masks. I want to be really clear on that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're on them.
I trust our kids. I trust that they're going to wear masks. I believe in the kids. I want you to, Bob. I want you to believe that they're they're going to follow the rules and wear masks. I respect what you're saying about vaccinations and you making a personal decision, but I don't I'm not going to go there because I've seen our kids acting appropriately, doing absolutely what they should be doing with masks. You know, human beings aren't perfect, but they're doing a great job. I just feel really good about that.
And and that just because all everyone's wearing them. We have to. But as soon as it becomes a not, as soon as that becomes the abnormal thing, it's it's they're going to take them off, vaccinated or not.
I don't think we can say everyone will, though, like.
It's there's.
Let's, yeah.
I would love to be surprised in that, but, you know, 20 years of working with eighth graders and, you know, yeah.
We also know kids. I would also say, I would also say, I go to Whole Foods and people will wear masks and some people aren't, some people aren't. I never thought that the person is not vaccinated. I just thought that that'd be a comfortable thing. And some people are comfortable wearing a mask. You said you're going to wear it every day. Good for you. If my kids want to win, they have to win the mask, they're going to win the mask. And I, you know, I want to echo what Dr. Sullivan says. I believe in the kids.
OK. I don't I don't want to risk that. And we can wait and see. If that happens, we can see and then come in and see what's the it's like. And maybe then we can assess, you know, what the kids are doing. Because it's it's not a question of them being dishonest. It's a question of being, do they want to fit in with their crowd?
I believe they're up to it.
Right?
Any other questions, Mr. Earlson, on behalf of CTA? Any more questions from CNA teachers? Unless you have anything else to add, Mr. Earlson, thank you.
No, I want to thank you for, thank you for your time. And again, I'm more than willing to sit down and discuss anything here that is for the best interest of the students in the district. That's what we stand for. And I apologize if any of our actions in the past have been taken out of context, but all our actions are based upon our reactions, reactions to what our membership is experiencing and what they're feeling. And if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to me and I'd love to discuss it more. Thank you.
Oh, for Mr. Earlson?
Not for Mr. Earlson, but I just, I haven't got all of them, but. So there's some shows of support.
Mr. Earlson, would you mind just remaining in the room? There might be, I'll catch up to the question. There might be some question for you or just comments or support.
Please, yes. So no address here, but I do think a staff member.
Just read it a little louder. I feel like we can't hear you.
This is from Eve Perel. It says, I cannot be there in person, but I support the CTA fees and active testing program for our schools. I'm just going to try to go through and read the ones that are in relation to the the narrative at hand. And we have, it's very difficult to hear. This is from Ali Andrews from 171 Hall Street. Just to clarify, if the nurse already told my child, I don't need to send her their vaccination card, is correct, correct? No, if they're on the MS. This is simply, we don't have the staff information on it. Chris LaBeece of 20 Brewster wrote, father of two JLS students and CHS teacher fully supports testing step. This is a Frazier. I think that's it for the questions regarding, oh, one more on that. Jessica DiLorenzo from 132 Chief Justice Pushing Highway. Regarding vaccination percentage, what is CMS vaccination rate and or what is the total percentage of CMHS? You need to fully report for the waiver when the entire CMHS gets eight percent. The answer, the last part of the question is, is yes, I do. And if I probably covered this, just the question was, but I'll just do it again. We are at 70, my details as of 10/13, maybe a little higher, but I don't believe much. 71.4% for the entire building. And, you know, we, in my estimation, 76 more people should be vaccinated to test for their vaccination. And I believe that is that for that. Someone said it is very difficult to hear.
Agree.
Yeah, it's hard. It's hard.
I feel like I'm hard of hearing all the time.
OK. So I don't know if you guys want me to proceed in agenda here. All right. So we have a Quebec trip. I know Pencil Mills is here to support that as well. So if you want to pull up a chair. Wonderful trip that has happened. Excited to see you here again. Talk about it.
Same as for Pencil Mills. Would you mind just, you know, speaking as clearly and loudly as possible.
OK.
Having audio challenges today.
OK. So thanks for, thank you for your time. So I wrote it, I just read what I've written so for my presentation. So bonsoir. Good evening. My name is Kathy Sanchez. I am teacher, French teacher at Cohasset Middle School, here to propose the French, the Quebec trip to the three-day trip to Quebec City, which will be May, April 30th to May 1st, 2022. So this cultural excursion will give our students a chance to practice their French while learning about one of the oldest cities in North America. We have received strong interest from students and parents. With past support from Cohasset Public Schools, we have enjoyed many successful trips. This will be my 15th year as chaperone. Chaperone student ratio is 1 to 10. Maria Regaro, language teacher, and Mr. Mills, MS principal, have volunteered at chaperones. There are also other teachers who have volunteered if needed. We have about 30 students. I have 34 that have showed interest.
That's awesome.
Our tour company is Jump Street Tours, who I've traveled with several years. We have a jump street tour guide who stays with the group. We travel by motor coach and we visit all sites by walking or motor coach. Our activities include walking tour of the old city, Monterey Sea Falls, the Museum of History of Quebec, and Maple Sugar Shack with traditional food and dancing. Student academic expectations include research of sites to visit and journal writing. I also have expectations for students who don't go. They will do a small project as well, but they will do research for Quebec for possible future travel. We believe that this excursion will help our students understand the importance of learning about other cultures through language and lay the foundation for further study abroad. So we do have, of course, our COVID concerns, the theme of the evening. So travel to Canada, currently, all travelers to Canada require proof of vaccination and a PCR test up to 72 hours before the trip. Travel back to the United States, there is no test required. So these are currently, obviously, things, hopefully, we're going to have changes because it's not until April, late April, May. We do have 90 days before the trip to cancel. So that would be the end of January. We have January until January to cancel the trip at no cost. That is full refund. So we did have to cancel last year. I want to say two years ago now. We didn't even run the trip last year, but two years ago, we did have to cancel. And so this will be two years of not going, trying to hopefully go this spring. So, thank you.
Any questions regarding the Quebec trip? Scotty?
No questions. You anticipated my question about changing circumstances and our right to cancel and wow. In the 1 to 10 ratio of students to teachers and chaperones, have you identified the individuals who would be the chaperones and have an idea of the number of participating students?
Yes. So there, so it's 1 to 10. So we do have Mrs. Regario, who is French, she is actually Spanish teacher in the middle school, but she's fluent in French, so she has taught French as well. And Mr. Mills has volunteered. And we do have other teachers that that volunteered as well in case things change. So we do have a few teachers that step up to volunteer. So it'd be 1 to, yeah. And then also, as I said, we have the jump street, really, we have a chaperone from the the tour guide, I should say, from the the tour company who stays with us. If there's any issues, any, you know, have somebody who is Canadian with me at all times as well. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Yeah, the kids love it. It's a great trip.
Are you given any questions?
No, I just, we, we, we're in. Jack is excited to know and.
Oh, good.
Talks about, talks French throughout the house all the time. And thank you for.
Good speaker. Girls. Yeah. It's been a pleasure.
Stay on.
I think it's great that you're during the trip back. A friend of mine was just in Quebec City and said she felt so safe, the border crossing. She felt like the border guard was a little lonely and hadn't seen enough people. So it did take a while to get across the border. He had lots of chatting to do. But once they got there, all restaurants required reservations and vaccination cards, and she felt so safe and confident. So it's really nice to hear that friend reviewing that just a few weeks ago. And I know that you would obviously be so careful and protective of the kids, and having a local tour guide is awesome. And I love touring with kids that age because they're so pooped. At the end of the day, it's hard to make any trouble, right?
If you saw the itinerary, we have, they're very busy.
Yes.
Yeah, it's like 80% vaccination rate in Quebec.
Yeah.
So I don't know about all of Canada. I think it's all of Canada. I may, I may be wrong, but I know Quebec is high.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. What a thrill that the potential is there to go back.
Do we need to vote?
This is why.
Oh.
You know that you've done in the past years, was the student chaperone ratio the same in the past year, 1 to 10?
Yes, 1 to 10.
Okay, you found that that's that's worked well, that's that's you feel secure after that, there's enough eyes on each group of kids.
Yes, yes.
You just, you did note that there were other volunteers, so you could obviously reduce that ratio as possible, but you feel like it's not necessary.
Well, if we hit 34, they do add the extra. So it doesn't even have to hit 35, but if they do hit 34, we do have the extra chaperone. And we have the tour guide is with us all the time, too. So, yeah, we feel very safe, comfortable with it. Yep.
And the accommodations, the, I see where you're staying. How many students to a room and what's the, what is the supervision protocol that are placed for the nighttime?
So we do have four in a room. So we have four students to a room. And we do the wing where we have the boys on one side, the girls on the other, chaperone in the middle or chaperone. And then there's two chaperones to a room, I should say, by sex. So there's two chaperones to a room. So we have, we try to arrange it so that the, we have the separation coverage. We do also have a, they do have a God at night from 11 to 6 in the morning. So, there's a God on the floor. Yeah.
And their passports, will those be collected by by the chaperones afterwards?
So students under 18 do not need chaperones to travel to Quebec. They need a student ID, a picture ID with a certified birth certificate. So they don't require passports. Those that do, some do, some don't. So I collect, I collect all documents, I, chaperone, that's my thing. I collect all documents as well as the medication, you know, the medication as well. Chaperones carry all of that. So.
I always ask this question for every trip for, and these are some of the best answers I've heard of all time, so.
Yes, I mean, eighth grade, it's.
Travel age.
These are really important experiences for the kids. I've been to this when I was younger, people like to hear me say this all the time, but I haven't talked to you about it yet. And I just, I'm just so proud of our faculty, faculty that are willing to provide this opportunity to our children because it just, you can't get a better experience than doing that in person. You can read and watch movies and listen to audiobooks, whatever it is, but you can't, you can't replace actually being there and seeing these things and doing these things in person. It's invaluable. They'll never forget it if they're on with it. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you.
We probably do need to vote to approve this. So is there a motion to approve the eighth grade trip?
Second.
There has been a motion to approve the trip, and there's been a second motion made by the committee, second by the dial, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bonjour.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And can I just, in wrapping too, I just want to recognize Kathy because she works really hard throughout the year to make this trip happen. So I know she's planning shortly to meet with parents. Throughout the year, she's continually in contact with everyone, making sure they feel good. And this year, keeping an eye on the news and COVID. So it's really, even though it sounds like a three-day weekend, it's really a full year labor of love. So I thank you for doing.
They're really grateful.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And thank you for doing that for the kids. Oh, yeah. This one stays.
Thank you.
Here's one, here's some questions. Thank you, guys.
One, we.
It's back to the other. How would you pick out? So this is by Jen Miller, 11 River Road. Other school districts have already implemented no masks. Do we have any information as to how they are handling, experiencing unvaccinated mask wearing? So to answer that, I, I know that there is, so what I learned from the attestation process is that it actually is, right when you get the document, you could implement. I don't know that anyone has done that yet. Ms. Miller may know more than I do. I think, I think there's only a handful and they're observing a process similar to what we're doing.
Yeah, but they weren't ready yet. They were, they were kind of doing what we were doing.
Right.
Now, I may be wrong on that.
But the answer to the second part of the question is I don't know. We have not been given any guidance as to how to deal with students who are vaccinated who may not be wearing masks, so. And hopping to your point, like, Hockington is looking into it. They, they received over 80% like we did. And then they were looking into it. And just your recent update is the fact that we are a co-hosted middle high school. So we're back, we're back to, we really don't know. So we, just to give, just in case they weren't watching, that's pretty much the update. So, it's a great question. It is disappointing to see kids experiencing non-compliance by students.
I don't think we've heard of that, though.
I haven't seen that. I want to be really clear, I've seen our students, and I, and if there were pockets, I would want to talk to my principals, and I do all the time, and deal with that immediately. I've seen nothing but compliance. So that was a very disturbing thing to be.
Is that also from Mrs. Miller? I'm just, just from.
That was Mrs. Miller's question, it's a great question. But I, I mean, I, we went throughout the whole high school today in random rooms, walking in and we did a whole learning walk. I didn't see one kid without a mask.
I also.
Students were spaced, I think that.
And there's, there's space that can be as much as they can. I didn't see that at all. That is, that is information that not only was news to me, but is absolutely the opposite of what I'm seeing every day when I'm in buildings. And I'm in the buildings a lot, so I just.
Can't wait till we can talk more about stuff like, like the morning, Quebec trips and let's go. I'm pretty sick of that, actually, I'm pretty sick of it.
Just do all first graders, maybe just.
One grade every day, I like that.
Anyway, that's not a responsive question, it's just the fact that we're visiting that and just thinking about that, just making, starting annoying. It's a pack of lights, but it is really.
Alrighty.
Okay, so, we have to continue here and move on to the next issue, which is an important one. And I think we'll be briefed, Dr. Sullivan, by our, our trusted supervisor.
He does a better job of that than I do, you bet.
So, so I'm reviewing the 2021, actually, it should be 2021, I'm so sorry, actually.
Well, leave it at 2021, so it's not that surprising.
So I apologize for that. So just think that our new, this year, or this past year, was that there was an extended time going on the assessment. Students in grades three, three were randomly assigned to one of the regular two-session tests. So maybe took one in ELA, one in math, and one in science, technology, and engineering. Normally, they would have taken two. Some students were allowed to take it remotely and we were one of six states that did that. This is general information, you get all this on the website for MCESS. If you go to Desi, but I figured I could just give a quick one. About 20% of students took the test remotely and the tests were monitored by the schools that those students attended. And then grade 10, they had a two-session in-school test, there was no option for them to do remotely. The student growth was calculated using two to three-year prior baseline for grades five and 10. So normally in the past, I'll explain a little bit more about that. It was a cohort that they would use and they would look at children's progress. So you would see their growth, it is not based on that, by historical growth. And then grade 11 students took the next generation or legacy tests for their scholarship purposes and that's the same, so. And there was a night participation, anywhere from 59, 100 to 7500 students. So what parents saw, because the reports went out, so what they saw was that there was a redesigned parent guardian report. And it was, they had a more friendly elements, that was what they were saying. And actually, it was, they had some graphics and shorter messages that made it a little bit easier for families. There were changes that they let them know about, that there were no reporting category or item results because it's only one session, so it really impacted the test itself. Questions were, question boxes, introduced achievement and growth chart. So it just, it was just an overall easier report, this is what it looks like. They are, yeah. I'm going to my computer, so you can just see, it definitely looked different. They show you the cut scores for not meeting expectations, partially meeting, meeting expectations exceeding. And it does explain the differences, you know, around the assessment that it passed through. And then the parent sees a report. And if you look at this particular example, you can see that here's a reporting on ELA. You see a number that says 510, so they're meeting expectation, but you see dots to the right and to the left. So basically, they're saying, we gave this score, but it kind of falls in this big range. So it's just a little bit of a different look to it. So, and they give you, you know, sorry, go back to that. And then you can kind of look at the testing, the assessment doesn't show your, your child's home progress over time. It just shows you a graph that just says what historical data look like. And then you can, the next one, participation, just real quick. High participation in the assessment. Really only grade 10 in math was below 90, but everything else was, you know, mid to high 90s for participation. So, so that means a lot of people took it, which is good. So this is statewide. It's just important to know that there obviously was a drop in scores, right? There was a drop in ELA, there was a drop in math. If you look at this, this is ELA. The blue at the top is exceeding expectations, the green is meeting expectations, the orangey color, rusty orangey color is partially meeting, and then the red is not meeting. So that kind of gives you the, where, where we fell as a state. There's that little blue line that you can see across. If you were to go back to 2019, you would have seen, for example, in third grade, that blue line, so above that blue line would have been meeting and exceeding expectations. Does that make sense?
Because they've changed the measurement?
No, just.
Because of the number of kids?
Yeah, and the draw, it was a drop in their score.
Yeah, 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 I'm just clarifying, yeah, I'm just making sure.
All right.
We have, just so, just what I understand, we have more oranges and reds this year than we've had in prior years. In prior years, the blue and green would have been down.
Correct, correct. And that's how, so that's how they showed across the state, all right? But if you notice over in grade 10, interestingly enough, if you look at that blue bar, it's above. So that's the only group that actually did better in their MCESS last, in this past spring, which is kind of interesting, right? So that grouping, they had more that fell into meeting and exceeding expectations. And then you can see in red, that's the difference, different, I'm sorry. Is it okay? Hi.
Because I'm chilling properly, that's all I have.
Oh, you want me to do this?
You're not doing it, right?
I am, I am, why don't you make me a photo? Okay, sure. I wondered, when I got the coffee, it looked like that?
I apologize, everyone, I'm gonna.
Okay, let's do it.
You want me to go back to that screen?
Yeah. Yeah, it was fun, it was fun, you want me to go back?
I go back to the.
Throw the bar graph up there.
All right, let's do it.
Give us some 10th grade.
All right.
It's back? There we go.
It's alive! That was like an 80s pretend technology.
That one, yeah. All right, so back to this graph, so this is the graph that, so you can see the whole graph. So you see the blue line and then you see 10th grade?
Yeah.
How it's, there were actually more students in meeting and exceeding. So it's kind of a.
Now, would that be ninth grade last year and 10th grade this year?
No, 10th grade is last year.
Oh, because they were in 11th grade.
Correct.
Current juniors.
Yep, all right. Okay, and then. Because I'm technical issues right now. I know, all right, let's eat this one.
I don't, I don't. Sorry for those moments, my car.
There we go, all right. So here's math, okay. And so the math scores, as you can see, there was a significant drop. So there was a significant increase in those that were partially meeting and those that were not meeting expectations. And so you can see that across the board, right? So that math, that our, that our meeting and our exceeding expectations was lower. And that was, that's across the, and you can see the difference if you look at that red, those very bright red. And again, statewide. So here's just quick, the changes. So if you look over to the left, it says ELA, 2019, 2021 change. It just shows you the average scale scores. So as you can see, for grade three, it was 504.1, 499.5. So just, it just shows you, it's just in a different format. Same for mathematics, you can see the difference. But again, these are states, these are not. And I already spoke a little bit about how they calculated the growth normally as a cohort that they look at and then they can look at your child's particular growth over time. You're probably, come on around 40 to 60% past that, except that growth. Last year, what they used was a baseline that was kind of historical and they thought that would be a better measure. Earlier, I was talking about the difference in the reporting. So as you can see, to the left, where it says 2019, this is based, where that circle is, you see the dots kind of all around. That shows your, that child's particular growth based on the cohort. If you look to the right, it doesn't move as much, it's historical data, so it's just kind of the average, and that's what they looked at. That's kind of very simplified. And then this is really just around the interim CDC standards for the classes for 2022 and 23, they're unchanged. All right, so now this is us, this is Cohasset. I will tell you that we did as well, as or better than the state on, on, pretty much in every area, right? So, so that's the good news. You can see here, this is grade three. And you know, we did see higher than not meeting expectation, we don't really necessarily see that, but we did. So we'll be looking at that, so to the left is Cohasset, to the right is the state. And I do have the numbers down below, you can, you can look at them to see what we are. So the state is, so CPS is to the left, right here, and then if you look at state, so right. So for example, in 2021%, of meeting or exceeding expectations, we got 70%, whereas the state was 51%. And you can also see, I put the historical, so you can see 2019, 64%. And then the state is 57. And you can see the difference in the scaled score, actually had a higher score in the grade. Any questions? I'll ask that as I go along. So I did same format, so everybody can hear the math. And you can see the differences, the visual is, you know, easier to see if you look at that graphic and work from the left. State to the right.
I can see a big difference next time around. We've been, have been able to implement Bridges in typical year.
Yeah, it would be really. Yeah, I think it's a really good, good thing, because I do think it's true. One of the things that we did around math at the elementary level is we worked really closely with Bridges Math and the consultants that they sent us because everybody was in the same boat, right? You only have a certain amount of time, you're, you're in hybrid. You, how do you make sure that you hit what you have to hit in the standards that year, because it's, it's so important to the next founding, the foundation for the following year? So we saw, when we, when we were looking at the data and we're going to break down that data analysis, where we did our math, where we, where we hit it, like they told us, our kids did unbelievable. Where we knew that we weren't hitting it, they didn't do as well. But we also know that Bridges is going, that the way the program is set up, whatever they didn't get, they're going to get this year and will be scaffolding within it. The one thing that we noticed, and this is from comments from teachers, is that the critical thinking that students have is so much higher than has in the past. So their ability to break apart numbers, their ability to understand higher-order thinking allows us to then have a really strong foundation to teach them some of those other content areas. And so I think you will be taking.
I think we'll see the orange block go down.
You will, you will, there's no doubt.
A little bit more of the blue too.
You will, so this was just our first year into Bridges. But when I looked, like I said, when I was looking at the data analysis, I was happy, I was happy with what I saw when I looked.
But now you really, you couldn't really, I mean, it's not meant to be a virtual platform in any way. When you're raised, it's like you're.
Right, but, but what we, when, what we attacked was the.
Yeah, of course, yeah, I'm just saying, I feel like we'll see.
We will, we will, there's been, yeah, real positive, the teachers are really very happy with, with the math program, Bridges. And again, so here's grade four. And you can see, again, we're, we're always better, you know, we're always higher than the state. Which is fine, that's great. Obviously, we want to, you know, do better. But you can see, we had a, we had a lot meeting expectations, which is great. We did okay over here in ELA. Again, here's math. Obviously, you don't want to see the higher number for not meeting, I mean, for partially meeting and not meeting too, but we did, we did better than the state. But obviously, we have, you know, we know we have our work cut out for us.
Interesting, zero, see them.
Yes.
That's common among districts this year.
It is, it really is. And, and just because we knew what we had to teach, so you're, you know, you don't necessarily have the opportunity. And kids aren't, weren't in school the whole time, you know, it was just a weird, you know.
And measurement and geometry, which are also almost always end-of-the-year units, are so far, we're like even farther behind. So if you look across the board, that was like, whoop, we don't know those.
Right, and we, and again, you have to remember too, it was one session. That's the other thing. So the child forgets one question on a concept. That's it, they didn't get it, they didn't get it. Right, so that's why, and I'll talk a little bit at the end about the data and how we're going to use it. And it's still important data, but it's one snapshot. And again, here's grade five.
Just to put this in, I definitely keep going on, but. For some of these things like grade four math, where we didn't have the opportunity and timing to get to some things. Just, yeah, that, whenever you can incorporate it, one of these, I'd be interested in how we plan to augment that.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, we can, definitely, I'll address that at the end. And then again, here's grade five for math. And interestingly enough, if you look at the score, the average scaled score, they're not very different. Isn't that interesting? So, and again.
Do they scale the scores to the number? Like, do they mathematically push those to, no matter what the test results are, to accept this?
It was all, yeah, no, they kept everything the same, they just, they didn't change the cut scores, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
And then grade five for science, you know, again, better than state. Again, the differential, if you look at the scale score, not very different. And then here's grade six. Yeah, we did much better. Than the state, and our percentage is good. But if you look, well, I should go back, I can't. Look at same score, average scale score. Interesting, right? And then here's our math. Again, always, always better than the state, but a drop, obviously, look at, you know, if you look at the percentages. Again, no surprise that we would have a drop, we're in a pandemic, still are in a pandemic. So anyway, and then here's grade seven. And then our grade seven math. Grade eight. Math is something we know that we need to work on across the district. That's why we have our new math program at the elementary level. And we're working with the middle, high school around that transition, especially in particular middle school because those students are coming up there. And then here's science. And then here's our, here's our ELA. We were 88% meeting, exceeding, the state was 64.
Trouble in drawing this is very math.
Yeah, and those things that we're going to look at. And that's one of the reasons we thought we need to consider adding additional staffing around math specialists.
In the middle school, right?
Middle school, right, we have a running specialist, which you were in the whole grade too.
Yeah, we've been talking about math. We need it.
We have, yeah, we have some data there.
From a pedagogical perspective, I just know, I mean, what, a lot of percentages are, you know, and, and, you know, it's sad to say, but the reality is you expect that we would have a drop that this difference in construction, instructional product was delivered is, but it's statewide, that's for everyone. That was information. So from a pedagogical perspective, what do you think of the explanation for your drawing of sixth grade math? The elemental, I believe, I mean, what, why?
Yeah.
It's the most staggering of all of them.
Yeah, I, I guess I wonder about the concepts. Leaving fifth grade, the role is in sixth grade and we were in hybrid. There's a, there's a shift.
Yeah, I guess it's a major, it's a major change, right?
It is, it's a big, yeah, so I guess that would be partly what I'd be looking at.
Is Bridges used at the middle school?
It's not.
So that's a. So that's interesting because they were just introduced to Bridges in fifth grade, didn't complete that year, and then are using a different curriculum.
Right, so that's.
So that's like a different language a little bit.
What that transition will be. Yeah, that's a good one.
Parents have mentioned that explicitly.
Yeah, you're kind of learning a new language of the different math curriculum.
Right, and Bridges doesn't go.
Right, 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 it's elementary.
Purely elementary. There are some programs that, that align. And so we, I've been in conversation with John Meldon, John Fortin about what that would look like.
And that's why you put Bridges online in these future plans, so that we can dress it up.
Exactly.
Like it's not going to ever steal the knife.
And then we double down with the math specialist, boom.
Yeah, I'm a close supporter of that.
Yeah, I really feel confident. Yeah, I mean, the teachers have expressed just, and I didn't ask for it when we were talking about some initial data around, just in general, what we were doing. And they could not say enough about the depth from which the kids, their knowledge of mathematics was. So, all right, so then I think I left off here. So ELAs, you can see, was increased math. We were 80% today, 52. So obviously a drop. A couple of not meeting expectations. So what do we do with this data? It's different data. It's not as strong as if it were an MCAS from a prior year where they had two sessions. So from a student perspective, it's okay data. It's really more district data. So you can use it to look at your child, but again, it was one session per. And if a child missed one question in a content area, then, but that may not be really true. They just didn't get that one, right? But they may really know the concept, they just didn't know that particular answer. So, so I think that that can be a bit challenging for parents if they're looking at this. And again, I always say MCAS is one snapshot in time. That's why we have multiple and a variety of assessments, so we can look at students holistically. But we're going to use this data. We're going to use it in item analysis. We're going to look at where are those pockets where our students didn't get, didn't maybe learn that concept as strongly or didn't get the concept. In, at the elementary level, we already have it mapped out so that we know specifically what wasn't taught the year prior or which was just introduced, but now we need to do it either developing or mastery. So we have that all planned out with our reading specialist and math. The Bridges program helped us do that. So we already know where those are. There are going to be times that something's going to pop up and a teacher will have to scaffold in that moment. And, and the district and the state is saying, that's what you should be using. Use this to inform your teaching practices and understanding where those issues might be. You don't want to go back and say, okay, now we're going to teach third grade curriculum all over and get to our fourth grade. So that's not productive. We need our kids moving forward and then we'll scaffold where they need it and we'll just keep on moving. Because it's the whole country, I mean, the whole world, right? So the whole world, so everybody's in the same boat, so everybody's doing the same thing. But we'll adjust our curriculum and again, look at our alignment. This is what we'll use this data for. Gives us time to think about what happened and then really look at our support. So those are the things that are happening. So any questions right now?
So one, I just also, Chairman Lo, noted the drop in grade six, I think it was. Also, there's a similar drop in grade four. May not be true, but we'll do the same thing.
Yeah.
Sure you're aware of that, but that's one that would, we're into. Another logistical question. So the data you have on MCAS, it gets down to granular topic matters? So that you can identify specific, like, you know, candidate of swears or maybe not.
So it'll break down by standard, it breaks it down by the item. I can't, we can't always see all the assessment questions. That's always been the case. They'll allow you so much so you can see it, but it tells you the standard. And then what we do is look for trends and patterns. So for example, this was in 2019, when I was working with fifth grade teachers and I, we did an item analysis, there was an area, a couple of that were red, which meant we were lower than the state in like two or three areas, like two or three red. And to your point, I said to the teachers, don't panic when you see it, but could you just look at the data and tell me why, why you think the kids didn't do as well here? And they all looked and said, oh, because it's measurement. Let me cram it in at the very end of the, and so boom. And I said, okay, so great, now what are you going to do now knowing that this is the one? You know, you have to teach it, this is before we get Bridges two. But now what are you going to do? Well, you know what? They're going to, they said, we're going to weave it in throughout the year so that we do get them. So, so those, that's why using this data is really helpful when it comes to looking at districts.
And then just to make sure, I know that went home, scaffolding is the term for bringing back the third grade curriculum to the fourth grade?
And supporting wherever they are, right? So scaffolding has, you hear that word when you're talking reading, when you, when a child needs or students need support, you scaffold it by seeing what is, where are they at? Giving them the intervention they need in order for them to then progress forward.
And does the data coming from MCAS give teachers that level of data where additional needs are needed to be met on a per student basis or is it on the, on the just class in general?
It is, yeah, it's more, they do say whether the child got it or not, we can get that data, but it's more, we're using it more as concept for the, for that grade, like what happened? You know, so those students, and they showed in fourth grade this, but we know in fifth grade, we need to do this.
To do a roadmap to help find those gaps in learning, to help scaffold, part of the turn.
And we use that junk with, right, I know, nicely done. And I think.
You just saved yourself $15,000.
And we use a variety of assessments. It's not just this, we use a variety of assessments to look at children holistically so that we make sure we have a picture. Because there are children and students who will do very poorly on the MCAS because they just panic and can't take the test. But then you look at them and all their other assessments, they look good. Or the opposite, you can have a student who's not performing, knock it out of the park. You can't fake an MCAS, this is really interesting. So then you say, well, why is that child not performing? Obviously, they're very, they know what they, they know the content. So what do we need to do as educators to make sure they're engaged? That they feel like this is meaningful work and are able to perform.
And then lastly, there was, there was something, there was a piece of data in the, in the thing that went to parents that I got because I'm a parent. That wasn't here, and that, it was an assessment of the district versus other districts. And I think it had us slightly below median or something. Is that? Was that in there?
Well, explicitly, we weren't supposed to compare to us, right?
Thought there was some piece in there that had us like, just right in, right in the middle of the path.
Right, we're not comparing, so the district to the state.
Maybe this is the state.
So we're above the state.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to have to look at it. It was on your actual report.
Yeah, unless I hallucinated it, which is possible. It's been a weird week, but.
I'm going to go back and look.
Okay.
Because we actually were above.
This data seems very positive relative to the state.
So on, on the report I read, my house, there is a little matrix and it had your child's score, the district average and the state average. So that was what I saw.
That was what I saw, the state average.
Yeah, and then you can see kind of on this sliding scale how your child fell compared to the district average, which is a close comparison, because they're all receiving the same, similar instruction. And then the state, so I think that was the tiers of comparison that I was interpreting.
Yeah.
Because we're not allowed to just throw around other people's averages.
Correct.
Yes, Ms. Chaney, any questions?
Yeah, I just, where are we with the math, amount of math specialists? Do we have the funding? Do we have like, have we been looking into it?
For the middle school?
Yes. I think you'll see that in our next budget request. Where would that be? That will be coming up in the, well, you're going to hear the budget process in a few minutes, right? Okay. So that will, that will tell you where you're. Okay, great. It's something that we'll be looking to. It's a tough priority. It's something, yeah.
Was that all Ms. Chaney?
That's.
Okay, there, there is a question from one of the community members.
Yeah.
Elizabeth Fraser of 27 Windy Hill Road. She asks regarding math, what of Dreambox? That was a huge part of the rebel learning requirements, the elementary schools, case five, and it has not been mentioned. Is there any data to support students are learning anything on Dreambox? Does it support the Bridges program?
Oh. Not, I'm sorry, so pardon me, she hasn't heard, I didn't talk about it tonight, you mean?
I think that's, I think that's what that means.
I think she's saying, yeah.
So, yeah, so Dreambox and Lexia, so Dreambox and Lexia are online platforms for students to practice and gain more strength in skills. So it's an, they're adaptive programs, which means the child goes in, takes, answers questions, and then it moves up and down based on where they are, how they're answering. So, you know, it will increase the difficulty of the questions and then it will kind of give a level. And then they will then give them tasks and activities related to that level and then keep pushing them up to the next level. So that's a part of homework. We were using it as part of programming last year because we were in a hybrid mode model and it was, you know, it gives a lot of practice for students at home. So is it, is it, the question was, is it related to Bridges? It's not part of the Bridges program, is that the question?
No, I think she, she, I think Ms. Fraser was looking for any data that shows that Bridges was something that was helping our kids.
Dreambox.
And Dreambox, she mentioned both.
Oh, yeah, well, I think the piece about, again, about Dreambox is that it's adaptive. So it, it addresses your child where they are, meets them where they are. So it supports concepts, so it is tied into the standard, so it is doing those things. It's not that it's necessarily aligned up with the lesson being taught that week in Bridges, if that's clarifying.
Because one of the things I'd say about Bridges two is it really pinpointed where we need to work.
Yes.
So I think that's a very, I think that's, maybe you can talk a little bit about that because I think that's an important part. Sometimes, you know, I, Dr. Jones gave an example of a moment in her past elementary school where she was able to ask teachers and they were able to say, here's the area that we think we missed and they worked on it, but often it's not as clear as that. Sometimes the data drives it a little differently. And Bridges, I think we sort of know what we need to do.
We do, because we worked with a consultant from Bridges and they said, you know, they told us exactly what we should teach and the things that we didn't have to necessarily teach, we could pull it out because it was going to get to be taught in the following year. So it's that, so it spirals through. So for example, you may in third grade just be introduced to a concept, but then you get to fourth grade, it's developing and possibly a mastery. It could just be though that it's just introduction, introduction for the next year, developing, developing, mastery. So it does spiral, so kids are seeing it often. And one of the other unique pieces of Bridges is there's something called a math corner. And that also then takes concept and spirals them through. And that happens on a daily basis from, you could do five days a week, maybe work from three to five days a week in addition. So that's another opportunity for students. So it kind of spirals through, so that issue around the geometry that you didn't get to, you're doing it in number corner anyway, and, and you're, you're introducing it and the kids are working.
So I think one of the points also is that I think this is a two-year package for Bridges and I think we can look at.
So last year we implemented, but you're correct, we implemented it based on what they told us to do because we were in a pandemic and we were hybrid and all those things. This year it was a full fidelity and on top of that, scaffolding where we needed.
Can I, can I say something about Dreambox?
Yes.
Just to go back to the question that was posted. I think that with any adaptive program, Dreambox, Lexia, others, the frequency, the frequency with which a child is doing it and the independence with which a child is completing it is going to make the difference.
Right.
So if a child is with someone who perhaps knows more about math and they are helping them, it's not responding to that child's ability, it's responding to whoever is helping to answer the question. So if the child is doing it the recommended amount and independently and selecting from a variety of categories, they will be getting a well-rounded exposure at an appropriate level for them. If you're doing it once here and there and getting help, it's not going to make as much of a difference. So with like, with any tool, if you use it to fidelity as, as recommended, it can make a difference. If it's something that causes mental breakdowns at your house and you decide to not touch it, that's okay, right?
Right.
But it's not going to be a helpful tool in that situation. Speaking from personal experience, and now this year we're back to it, right? Three nights a week, great. So it's all about how you use the tool.
And we told that to families last year.
Of course.
If you want to use it, it's here, it can be helpful, but you have to use it with fidelity.
Right.
You have to, you know, you have to be on it all the time in the recommended amount. We also tell parents, don't overuse it.
Yep.
You don't want to do that either.
Just like with Lexia, yeah.
So that's, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're welcome.
We'll work with that together. It's a poor topic, I just pointed out some areas. Russ Pialero and trying to incorporate with some budgetary considerations for next week later.
We do have a question. We have a very nice comment, if I could read it, from earlier in the night that I did read. It was just a compliment from Abigail Sullivan, 87 Pleasant Street regarding our first grade presenter. I'm so sorry, Sullivan, Texas. But I'll read it now. She says, wow, way to go, great one. This is an excellent example of Osford teachers integrating research related to the sense of leading with the already in place foundation program. I'm so excited for all of the students. Thank you, and thanks to the students. It's a very nice, very nice note. And we also, I'd like to read the, the other note too, but I think probably you tend to, to do this, because it's not.
Now, where are these coming in?
You know, there.
Just some backlog, it was an earlier comment, is that correct?
Okay, that was an earlier comment. These are all in the six.
That was actually made at the time that the first graders were here.
Yeah. You want me to not read it?
No, I think we should, I just, I.
You can't see it?
Mrs. Darwin, I monitored them as well, but he had gotten, got them on.
You only see comments since your login.
That's not seeing.
I try to make sure we do.
Sorry, everyone, we did not know these.
No, and it was, I mean, there was a lot. And this actually, this particular comment wasn't contextual with what we said, so it makes sense to read it now. I do apologize, Ms. Fraser, that it was submitted a while back. But hopefully you're still with us and following along. The question is from Elizabeth Fraser, who does not give it back.
Oh, she already did, 27 Windy Hill Road.
I'm so sorry, I figured it was. Learn if I saw that. I recently requested Dibble's data from the elementary school and received pushback. How can we achieve more transparency regarding Dibble's scores? Can these scores be automatically sent to parents? This information would be very useful to parents as they help their child reach their potential. So I, I want to just adjust this quickly by saying, first of all, we want nothing more than to be transparent with everything we do, including our data. And we, I apologize, I said right now, we're not in a place where we can't be automatized with the data that we're providing. We're going to get there and, you know, I just, I want folks to make sure you understand we're working with you. Any teacher who'll sit with a family in goal for a diagnostic of your child as, as it applies to their learning triumphs, challenges, whatever it might be in person, and will, will, will give as much data as we're able to. I think part of it is a training issue, part of it is an availability issue in terms of the data that we can, that people are able to access. And I think part of it is a consistency issue too.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so I just want, I just want to let her know that, you know, we recognize this is something we, we need to work on. And, and I know that there's this passion behind this and I get where it's coming from, but, you know, as a superintendent of the district, I want folks, I really want folks to know that we're, we're, we really want to partner with you on this and get to a point where we're, we're providing that.
We do, I think, but to the point of, did you want to say something?
I think I'm going to say what you're going to say and then I'll say what I'm going to say.
Okay.
You go, all right.
So one of the things about data is that, you know, the scores come and teachers interpret them. They look at them, they just don't look at one score. We look at multiple data points to address where children are at, right? So that's how we decide. When it comes to things like Dibble's scores in isolation, they don't tell the whole picture. A lot of districts actually don't even send those reports home. You, you discuss them in your conferences or if you want to talk about it in the teacher, you know, you set up a time to talk to the teacher. They don't normally go home. There are some parent-type reports that are out there, but out of context, it's really hard. So teachers have always gone over information with, with their family, right? This is, this is what I see for your child, this is, you know, where we're supporting your child. These are the things you can do at home to support your child. I do think that, to Dr. Jones' point, there is some inconsistency because I do think Osford was sending some home. There isn't, so I think those are things that we're going to work on this year. And I had sent that letter out and actually you had asked me about it in our last meeting, that we're, it's not that we're not giving out assessments. The teachers are going to talk you through it when you go to conferences, so you understand what's going on. Because it's a bigger picture than just that one score. Because it's a bigger picture than just that one score or one assessment that we use. So, hopefully, you know, people will be patient with us and understand that we're going to continue. But teachers have always used the data to drive their instruction and support their students. That has never not happened.
We, we do want to create a systematic approach to.
Absolutely. Right. But some, right, right. And so, those are things that we're looking into as to what, how we could, you know, maybe do something. But in general, a lot of like DIBELS do not go home.
Right.
They, they don't get sent home. They're shared at conferences. And that's across, that's all, a lot of districts. That's not just, just this district.
Do you need to repeat what you said, Dr. Collins? No, because I don't, it was kind of like you were saying to Dr. Collins. I just want to make that an important point.
Well, I just said we're, we're really looking to make a, create a system that is very apparent in what we communicate and why we communicate it across, you know. And that's really, I think, what I hear parents wanting, families wanting. And, you know, I, you understand that. We're, we're evolving towards it. And I certainly didn't, you know, I don't want anyone to feel that there's, there's pushback here. It's just a matter of us gathering, gathering together, creating a, a system and making sure that we relax the data appropriately. And we'll do that. So.
Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I feel like part of your answer, Dr. Sullivan, was making me think of the email about the I Ready and that's a separate assessment.
That's true.
And so, DIBELS has been in the district longer.
A long time.
It's evolved. We're now in DIBELS eight. And so, that is a familiar tool that is used by teachers. Every single year, both virtual and in person, I've always received DIBELS results. I cannot help but interpret those as a mother and reading specialist. I have both lenses. Today I was in a conference. I was given one subtest result. I asked about the others because I know what they are. And we had a full conversation without me looking at anything because there's a list of children which is confidential.
Right.
And every single piece of information I asked about was given and we discussed it.
Right.
This week is such a perfect opportunity to have those conversations.
Absolutely.
I Ready is a totally separate assessment.
Yes.
My kids came home yesterday and they, they were, hey, we did I Ready today. They're like pretty jazzed about that. So.
They were tired of it. Those kids were really.
And at the elementary level, they love it because they think it's a game. Again, they have game breaks and it's really.
Yeah. It was like our snack time discussion. You know, I did I Ready today. So, it's a different thing. It is used and individual subtests aren't as meaningful as composite scores. And that is what is used to inform our.
Right.
small groups, our intervention, our acceleration. So, it's, it's very actively used by teachers and it is very much part of conversation at conferences. So.
So, we're not withholding anything. It's always been that they've discussed them in, in their conferences. And that, that will continue.
We have a, a follow-up comment from, from Ms. Fraser saying it's a transparency issue that needs to be addressed. An X-ray doesn't tell the whole picture either. The parents have a right to see the X-ray. So, but I, I do hear, Dr. Sullivan, you are working on transparency, working on getting data.
Yes.
And so, that's something that maybe we'll continue on in our discussions as we move forward.
Yeah, and I would encourage anyone to have a conversation with their, with their, their child's teacher to, to make sure that they get the information. And I also want to acknowledge that we are working on this. This is.
Yeah.
We have, we have a second comment that's come in from Ms. Jenny Cunningham on Blaine Hill Street. "Dreambox is a very large percentage of the homework expectation for fifth grade currently. I think my child needs to be prepared for sixth grade and the increased independent work requirement. I don't feel comfortable letting my child opt out of homework at this point, even though she hates Dreambox. I think that's a slippery slope. Would teachers be expected to give solely paper pencil work if we decided Dreambox did not work for them?" This sounds like.
I guess that's my fault that that comment was posted. And I was talking about last year. Dreambox is expected of my fourth grader this year as well. And I am not her teacher. So, it's not fair of me to say, don't do it. That was a last year comment about no tears over virtual assignments. So.
Right.
I apologize.
But if, but again, with anything, whether it is a paper and pencil task for homework, whether it is being online programmed, if your child is really struggling, please talk to your teacher. This is, this is something that's been going on forever, right? There are times when children are struggling at home and a parent and a child are in a battle over it. Talk to the teacher. Teacher will help you figure out a way to make sure that home is not as much of a struggle. There's always ways to make accommodations. So, please do that. Just reach out to the teacher.
So, I just, I just want to say that like, there's a lot of parents coming up with data sharing issue and I think you've been clear that we're looking to improve that. So, that's good. But I, I, I think that we just need to acknowledge that some parents feel as though the information could be given, like we have it and, and there may not be some, some, some systems in place. And my understanding is that it's best to have a sort of uniform, you know, automated system.
This system plays a disconsistency.
Right, right. Everybody's, the assessments are being used.
No, go ahead.
Okay, the assessments are being used. They are implementing supports based on the data that they have, that they receive, you know, that the teachers gather.
Right.
And then it's always been practiced that they've spoken inconsistency. Teachers always speak about it in conferences. It's just that it looks like some, Osford was giving out reports to some people. So, there's just that inconsistency need. And it's a, it's a, it's a family or a parent report. In general, it's not normally given out in other districts either. It's just, it's just because it's one piece of data. But to Ms. St. John's point is, when you talk, the teacher can talk to all of it and tell you what those scores were and, and what that means for your child.
I, I think I'm just saying that the parents feel though, even though it might not be done in other districts, it may be done in other districts, regardless of what it's done. It, it, it was sometimes done at Osford. And I think some of the parents like that. And even though it might be just part, just one piece of the larger puzzle, I think some parents feel like being armed with at least that information makes their teacher conferences more robust because they're able to prepare for questions based on that, even though it's not the whole picture. And it may not be, maybe it's, maybe it's not a, maybe it's not a, a, I don't know, an, an accurate sort of position or, or understanding. But, but I think that the way they feel is that I, I would, I would like to have information prior to teacher conferences rather than someone else being in charge of all the information and data and me not being able to see it, even though I understand the teacher is implementing everything or in the classroom or, you know, incorporating all the, that, that instruction. But I'd like to be able to see it. It's just like when a math teacher wants you to show your work to get to the solution, right? They don't just want the solution. They want, they want to see your work. And I think, I feel like some of the families feel that way too. And I think that we've said that we're just trying to develop a uniform system to be able to deliver that. It hasn't been done in the past in this district.
Right.
We're looking into how it might be done and it's just, it's more of American than the spring. And, and I just think that some parents are, are becoming fairly desperate because some of the scarages that existed before was in their experiences.
We're, we're working on it. And I don't want to make excuses with pandemic and everything, but there is, it's a little bit of a slow progress for our team to kind of capture this and to move this. And really, this is our first year where we're adding traction to this.
Right.
So, you know, I, I completely understand where people are coming from. I just want to, um, be forward and to work with us and know that no one's trying to hold back anything here. I can guarantee that. We're just trying to be transparent about what we, what we will share and won't share based on what's appropriate to share. It's kind of as what Ms. St. John said and, and, and what isn't. And we need to make a systematic approach of what, so.
Yeah. I guess what I'm hearing Mr. McClellan say is it's a timing issue as well. Like if you are receiving in the moment, here are the Frywords, here are the math results, here are the DIBELS. It's a lot to process.
No question.
And then you need, you're looking for ahead of time, right?
So, we're looking at all of that.
Exactly. You can speak more intelligently about it. You have beforehand, you're reviewing.
Yeah.
It's an interesting, all of us have had this sort of, but, uh, that's how I feel. I think that's how a lot of people feel. And I think that maybe at some point as we get a little bit more into this, I just got a comment, that, that the time of giving a little bit of a timeline as to when we feel that might start to be provided to families, you know, once we get, and I think you guys need a little bit more time when you can provide that with family to imagine.
So, this year is. Right, right. So, this whole year we are looking at our assessments, in particular elementary because they have the most assessments, but we're looking at it K through eight. But looking at what are all the assessments we're using? Now, we've, we've included I Ready for reading and math. What's being duplicated? Because we don't want to over-assess our students. And then how are we using the data constructively? What kind of platforms are there around being able to make sure? Is there a place to hold all the data? Just there's, so we're doing a lot of research that way. And then we're aligning it so that our practices are the same or, or whether, if they're, if they're not the same, they're developmentally appropriate based on those students. So, those are the things and that's the alignment. So, this whole year is sped doing that. But we didn't take any assessments away. We were going to do what we do in an average January because we're not sure yet. We just want to see the data. So, we're going to look at the data over the course of the year. And we do the assessment three times a year. Not all of them. Sometimes the, some of the DIBELS, you may not get a January assessment DIBELS because you're already at that chart that's not recommended that you would do that. But if you're below that chart, then you would. So, those are just all the things that we're going to look at.
Okay. Maybe just do an I, continue as I.
And actually, and I don't, I don't want this to be too much of a burden, but this has been an item that's come up in several committee meetings from the, from the, from the community. I wonder if there's a future agenda item where we can have an outline of the data that we have and the plan to, to, to give transparency to students and what, what the criteria would be. Maybe not even, you know, it answers, but what the criteria, what sort of things we are, would be comfortable sharing? What sort of things would not be comfortable sharing and why? Because I think even if we can't get to an answer, that, that at least will give people the feeling and visibility into the forward progress and help build that trust that we are, you know, thinking about it in the right way.
There's a deal to the literacy committee and also the MTSS committee that are, are basically working on various parts of this. So, I think it's important that.
We'll work with TLA.
And with TLA. So, the results of that, I think, and the fruits of those are buried at a particular time, whenever that may be. And I would need Dr. Collins to decide when that is. I think it would be an excellent opportunity to.
Thank you.
Just keep it on the radar because it's important.
I, I.
And we do have one, one last comment from, from Ms. Fraser. I think that's three.
Yes.
Thanks for addressing my question. NCAT scores are provided by the state. The district needs to provide the DIBELS math and math data to parents. It matters progress. We as parents need the information to be able to help our children home. I think you're, I think we hear you. And then another comment just came in from Twisting Print, Twixt and Quinn, 219 Sawyer Street. "Thank you for taking my question and for the time. Last year and during open house, I was informed programs like Walk to Read, where students could meet students in other classrooms that were on the same reading level, were canceled due to COVID concerns as well as the utilizations of the specialist rooms. Can you give us an idea if these programs and special rooms are being utilized this year for students? And if not, is there a plan to, in place to eventually bring them back?"
Um, yes, they were canceled during COVID. Yes. We're working with TLA now and so we are actually, I can't say that it won't, won't or will come back. Um, well, with our work with TLA, we're teaching teachers to, um, conference with students and do some other things around strategy groupings and flexible groupings. So, they're doing a lot of this within their classroom. But it doesn't mean that that may not come to pass. But right now we're working with TLA. So, students are getting supports and interventions. But we have, we haven't moved back to those. They have not gone back to Walk to Read yet.
May I ask a follow-up?
Let's go over them with TLA.
I'm sorry?
To use their color.
Oh, teaching, yeah, Teaching Learning Alliance. And so, that's a consulting group that is working with us in our literacy. So, they're helping us create a comprehensive literacy approach to, at our elementary level.
Very remarkable. First time I ever saw Walk to Read was in Gus Collins' elementary school.
Exactly.
And I know you're on Walk to Read. It's a program.
Yeah. So, it doesn't mean it won't be there. It's just that right now, we haven't brought it back because of our work with TLA. It doesn't mean children aren't getting the support. It's, we're just trying to build it all out now.
I'm just hoping that as the work with TLA evolves, we could organize and host perhaps some more literacy nights like were done in the past when Foundations was adopted. I think that so many of us are familiar with what intervention and acceleration looked like when we were in school. And then as the model shifts, it's hard to recognize it often. So, being able to provide that context and that lens to families as that develops will be so helpful in like, in that kind of open Q and A setting like it was done at Osford a number of years ago.
No, I agree.
And at, at different levels, of course.
I agree. No, I agree. And I think so as our, as our teachers and our reading specialists become more proficient and our reading specialists obviously have more skills in that area, they're actually going to an institute also with other reading specialists across the state to, to learn more, right? So, I do think that, so if we become a little more proficient at it, I absolutely agree. So, parents have an understanding of what it looks like.
And then maybe those could be recorded and shared because not everyone can make it.
It's true.
But, but they could access it later.
Absolutely. And we have videos, there's some math videos online from our math specialists. Yes, I can't scrape.
We have another comment in the community, Cassie near at 40 Red Gate Lane. "The comment about repeating DIBELS for students who fall below benchmark would happen in January. Does that mean parents are notified if their child is falling below benchmark on any of the assessments? Or are they only notified if repeatedly falling below the benchmark?"
You actually have to fall well above benchmark to not be re-dibbled.
Right.
So, that wasn't exactly the measure.
Yeah.
There is a cutoff point at which testing does not need to be repeated throughout the year.
Correct.
So, you can meet benchmark and continue to be dibbled throughout the year.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, that's true.
So, I don't know if that answered Cassie's question. If someone's below benchmark and the composite score is low and they're receiving intervention, that's going to be communicated.
Throughout.
Throughout.
They would know. They would, yeah, families would know if their child was not meeting benchmark. And they would look at a variety of, the teacher would look at a variety of assessments to see and then drill down as to why, why the child is, you know, what, what specifically? Not just they're not reading. What is, what's the specifics? You know, is it meaning of awareness? Is it syllables? What is it that's getting in the way?
Yes.
Okay. We need to move on.
Uh huh.
Okay. So, is that good, super tense report?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Owen, returning to you with the finance report.
I did thank you co-host if you want to. It might be easier if you shared because then you can actually see what you're sharing or showing.
Let's see.
If you have any problems, I can share, but then you won't know what I'm sharing.
So, this is just an update of the.
Maybe just a little bit larger.
I'll figure out how to do that. I always.
Hold.
I am hold. Yeah. Thanks for being concerned, Mr. Owen. You see that?
Yeah. You can walk anywhere. You can hit, hit on that one there. So, we got stuff on there?
Okay.
All right. Hit zoom.
I'm here.
Yeah, see the 100?
On 100.
So, this is just a update from, for the September, month of September, finance report. I'll be brief. Between the month of August and September, there's a significant increase between August and September, obviously because staffs return, payroll's running. So, definitely our expenditures are significantly higher. The sped tuitions that were reported last month, we had a shortfall of about $75,000. This month, we have a shortfall of $114,000. This was due to an increase in the other public schools' tuitions due to an unexpected cost share with another district.
What, what, what does that mean?
So, when a student leaves Cohasset or comes to Cohasset after a certain debt, after a certain date, we have to share the cost with the district they're coming from or to, at least for the end of the year.
So, the unexpected classroom means there were unexpected students leaving our district, going to other districts and we share that cost of their.
Um, I just did a little brief snapshot of budget by school. I'm trying each month to give you some, a different, a different look, a different, a different view. So, you can see, you know, the school budgets, the expended amount, the encumbrances, the balances. We have to remember middle and high, all the custodial staff and maintenance pieces are in the high school, which is somewhat of the difference between middle and high, you know, as well as staff. The circuit breaker, good news is it, it went up a little bit. So, we're receiving, instead of $648,000, we're receiving $701,000 this year. So, it's gone up slight, which will. So it's gone up slight, which will definitely help with our budget planning for next year. Then we get into our capital, which is ongoing. Deer Hill and Middle High School H R X system manhandles have gone up to bid. We're just waiting the mid-opening. The Oscar sprinkles went up to bid, and the work is to begin December break. Trick or trap, obviously, we're going to do right after the holidays. The wood shop dust collector has arrived. The door faults are being done currently. The science lab furniture has arrived. So things are definitely moving in the right direction. We'll actually, probably at the next meeting, talk about a rough bracket of our capital for next year. Grants, no significant changes other than the two highlighted areas at the bottom, which were two new grants that just came in. The American Rescue Plan Individuals with Disabilities for seventy-five thousand and then the same grant but for early childhood at sixty-six hundred dollars. So, you know, throughout the year, we get these grants to become eligible. We apply for everything that we can. I give you balances on revolving funds. And what we, you know, what we spent, what we brought in for revenues. Obviously, the food service, we've had meetings and conversations about improving in the food service area. So that's work in progress. They are collecting quotes for some upgraded equipment in some of the schools. So that number will be going down. We're adding a couple of new staff.
Where are the staff added? From where? We're adding some new staff.
For the school, it's progress.
The school, it's progress.
So.
Is that, what does the eighty thousand and forty-four thousand represent on the receipts?
So, let's see. We had eighty thousand is what we've brought in to date. The forty-four thousand is what will be expended. And then this seven hundred and sixty-five thousand is coming on the first order. That pretty much summarizes it. There's not much difference from month to month. No significant change other than the ones I've outlined. I've also included just, you know, for your review, bus maintenance reports, what the summary is on what we spend in that. I don't know if there's any questions on that.
Any questions, Miss Owen?
No.
No, sir. Karen, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I was just maybe even request. Has anybody requested any shirts for the middle school cross-country team? Now, I gotta be honest, it's embarrassing. I can't find the shirts.
So we should do that.
If the school has a shirt.
We did last year.
We don't have them this year.
Well, I know you do.
It's, so I was, maybe we can make a motion to get them some T-shirts to represent. And we gotta move on fast because.
What are they using?
What do they wear?
They're rep, it's awesome. I went today, it was in Milton. And next week, if we, if we could vote on this tonight, then we could get them T-shirts for next week because we're actually hosting.
What are they using right now?
It's cross-country from middle school, which we have finally, we have, I wanted to thank. Yeah. And it's, it's a great program. My son runs in it, his friends run in it. It's girls first, boys next, and it's great. It's just that we don't have any shirts.
So do they wear a uniform or are they still wearing blue?
Our kids have nothing. Every other school just.
Wearing their clothes.
They just.
What are they wearing part of the year, you know?
Whatever, no, not like.
They just have like, they just wear whatever.
It's not a new student activity.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it should never be someone ordering them.
We've done that. I don't know why. That's news to me, so let me check. So, I mean, I, that's my feeling. I was gonna buy them myself. So if you guys say no, I'm gonna write a check.
I mean, does it run through athletics?
So just say, just the Cohasset logo and maybe a sneaker, a running sneaker.
Student activity, but we have plenty of money in the student activity without purchasing. Someone needs to take, you know, get an order.
Yeah, last year we used the Cohasset strong T-shirts as the uniform. Two of them would have been.
Last year?
They ran cross-country last year. It's in the woods, you're outside.
So if I were to reach out to someone to find out how many, what sizes?
Yeah, John, I'll tell you.
John, okay.
I'm surprised because he's usually so on top of that. Yeah. Well, I'm just proud that, look, I don't want to put it, I just want to say how grateful I am that our kids are doing great. It's a great program. I go to all the meets, I love it.
They got a lot of good stuff.
And then Cohasset kids today, the girls were rooting on every kid from every town. Just go, go. And the only reason why I knew they're Cohasset kids is they didn't have a.
Because they were without you.
Yeah, so if.
How many meats have they had?
Sorry?
How many meats have they had?
Um, once a week, we go to Milton, we went to Randolph.
So there have been seven?
Wayne, sorry.
Have there been like seven meets?
Yeah, there's two left.
We've done it for at least three years.
John, you're the one that.
No, they had T-shirts last year. I think they.
No, they didn't do it last year. I think this is our first year that we ever did.
No.
Really?
Sorry. No, because I've got better beats and I need this year. So I know, I know. Because. And they had uniforms when I saw them, but it was the, I know exactly what they were. I have pictures, I can show you. Cohasset Strong T-shirt. That's what they used.
So they use that as the uniform? Because every child in the district has that shirt and not every child in the district is on the middle school cross-country game.
So actually, at the time they used that.
So that's not a uniform.
Not every child in the district has that shirt. They, the only.
Mine do, sorry. Elementary. It's not because I am special.
It sounds like this is an imminently solvable problem.
Yes.
Get their uniforms.
They were given at elementary.
Okay, elementary, elementary.
We'll find the number.
This is timely on the track.
I understand that.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Nope.
Yes. That's an embarrassment. Thanks for bringing it up. All right, Mrs. St. Ange, any questions?
Not about the budget, I don't think. I, no.
Any questions, as always?
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Should I add a summary of this?
Um, there's only two other pieces to that, just brief. We don't, you know, we don't really have to read through it. There was, I don't, I don't have it on my computer, so I don't know if you can share it, if you want to share it. It's the budget calendar.
Oh, yeah.
Let's do the budget calendar.
Wasn't that?
Either one.
Have it.
I thought it.
Budget priorities, would you use budget priorities for us?
Which one are these?
Priorities. So just brief.
Gosh, I think so many things.
I know.
It's similar to last year's, we, you know, we reduced it some. We aligned it with our strategic plan for twenty-three point one compass points. Obviously, teaching and learning is our first priority as always. Social emotional wellness.
That's our four compass points.
Of course, which is strategic plan. Our resources and our communication engagement. So, I mean, we put together the team and aligned with the strategic plan. So, I don't know if there's questions, suggestions?
This is obviously a necessarily very high level. And it's like according to the calendar, we'll get a more detailed outlay of what's going on. This seems to be to align very well with strategic plan. So looking forward to hearing more about how you're translating your strategic plan into actual budgets, budget plans.
Any questions on that? No?
No, budget calendar.
Awesome, budget calendar. So this is, this is a draft. We sat together and, you know, put this together, Pat and I, Leslie and the group, just to see, you know, we kind of mimic last year's. What's missing on here is the next school committee meeting with the capital review for the school committee before we actually do a walkthrough. But I would want to make sure we had the walkthrough on there because that was important people last year. And we're going to, you know, have many discussions. A draft, a draft, primary draft for the next ten years is being sent to the town. It was due on the fifteenth of October. So a lot of stuff is, you know, what was on it from last year. There's a few, a few added things that we can talk about at the next meeting. If there's any additions, changes you think we should add to this, that would be, you know, great just to let me know. But we tried to cover everything. We added some meetings in there, additional meetings to the staff budget in case you needed to. Not necessarily, I have to, but it's there for around throughout the year.
Any questions, Ms. Owen, regarding the compound?
Love it. Thank you. It's great.
Sit down.
No, no, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Karen? St. Ange?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen.
Thank you.
All right, next section of school committee comments and reports. Are there any reports with stuff?
Um, school facilities needs to be, that would be Ms. Karen. Do you want to talk about?
I just always go last, so.
So I, from subcommittee, I have no reports on the subcommittee.
But. Ms. Karen, do you have any reports? You're welcome to give us school facilities. We're both on it. You can give it or I can give it.
Uh, I think you should, well, I can tell you what we experienced from our walkthrough. We can start with that. That was a great walkthrough we had yesterday. Thank you. I gotta be honest, knowing that, I can only tell you that you guys did it and I appreciate that coming as a parent. Like it's just, you've been reiterating what I've been saying for three, four, five years now about the whole learning curve that we have on our, because of the way the facility is. I thought that was very informative yesterday to learn that our space is just out in confluence with what we're dealing with. And it's not something we can fix. It's not something we can't fix right away, but it is something that we can look into. And it was, you know, it was nice to see that you guys understand that, like to see other schools and what they're doing and seeing their buildings and how we can. That said, I'm still proud of the fact that our kids are doing well and my kids are doing well too because it's not about the facility. It's about the people that are in the facility. And I'm proud to say that you guys are great and I got that. I think we learned a lot. And I'd like for you to share your experiences yesterday as well in that walkthrough.
Yeah, just for people at home, there was a walkthrough with two members of the, actually three members of the school facilities committee, including Mr. Karen. And we observed the facilities at the middle high school and looked through at some of the classrooms, some of the challenges that our teachers are facing and flexibility of the space and adapting the spaces to new pedagogical techniques. And also some of the actual just issues with having schools that were old and, you know, not very recently updated, like outdated power grid, inability to be flexible with things like air conditioning, some structural issues that have been addressed, but, you know, are the sorts of things that can recur. So the goal of this, of this walkthrough was to give that committee the initial read on where our facilities are so they get a clear view of what it is. I think that we accomplished that in large measure. And I'm looking forward to working with the facilities committee on coming up with some greater solutions to make sure that our students have the facilities that they need to succeed.
I just want to thank you for the setup. That also Friday night, there's a Cohasset Education Foundation is doing a fundraiser. It's in Hall. Seven o'clock in the evening.
Right.
You know, we got Good Old Home coming this weekend. Before it's done, my kids are looking forward to it. A lot going on in the district. You know, I'm very happy to say that I'm being part of it. Thank you.
St. Ange, thank you.
Um, I attended an alternative energy committee meeting this week. And if you recall earlier this summer, Ms. Modell had, had kind of introduced the idea that there's this brick grant and it would possibly be able to subsidize roofing and the solar panels. And so they are continuing to move forward, trying to figure out if they could possibly get money to do that project that would kind of be comparable, not more than what subsidy would be for a roof replacement. So they're pursuing that. Obviously, that's a goal of that committee is to get solar and using the school roofs, but it would also potentially get a school roof. So they're continuing to, you know, write that grant. So we'll see what comes of that. I know they've been doing more research into electric buses and she reached out to Ms. Owen about that. So they're continuing to gather information. I feel like all this technology is ever changing and evolving as, you know, and we'll kind of cycle through in our orbit and budget will pass, you know, every so often. But it may not be what we're looking to do. We're out, looking to outsource buses, right, maybe, yes? But they're continuing to gather information because who knows, it could benefit us. I also went to a Deer Hill School Council meeting, which was terrific. And we were kind of ramping up and previewing to make the school improvement plan, which those will be shared, we're a little off on the schedule this year, right? Kind of recovering.
Strategic plan.
Strategic.
Their school.
Yeah, school improvement plan. So just always so well-run. Al Sullivan does such an awesome job with those meetings and just great to hear. Also, just teacher feedback at that meeting about bridges and about being back at school with kids and just really just positive feelings. Even with, you know, we were talking about MCAS, like it feels so, like the, like the data is supporting what's happening. It doesn't feel like so, like it's a crestfallen about lower scores because what was targeted with bridges is happening and kids are getting it. And so it just feels really good to have curriculum working and seeing that come to fruition. So that was great. I think those are my only updates.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Ange. I don't know what to say. So, moving on, approval minutes, we have the, we have some minutes to approve. And those minutes, the October sixth, the twenty-one school committee meeting, we essentially advanced the meeting and then we had a chance to review them. And they're actually very better, I think, of revision and revise versus the first one. So.
Yep.
Unless there are any questions, is there a motion to approve the revised set of minutes as emailed to everyone by our secretary, Ms. St. Ange?
So moved.
Motion has been made to approve those minutes. By Karen, it was second.
I, I have not had a chance to review the minutes.
Okay.
And I second.